Okay, first Ivan is going to be economic development. I like from a perfect actually giving us some insight on things that's down there. All of that help us with the reparation.
Yeah, thank you very much for the opportunity. This is not going to be helpful. It's so much presentation we're discussing. Feel free to ask questions any time. As I was sharing, this presentation will look like almost economic development 101, but it's not meant to be that. This is going to be more basic, more hands-on. There's a lot of similarities between Wellington and Berthick, population-wise, it's harder. Development is similar in terms of housing starts increased by that, and there are some differences. But I think fundamentally, there are some similarities. I think we want to start with that. And so, this is a combination. This is economic development. For most economic developers, probably throughout the country, are to me coming to Colorado, I think is the primary jobs, manufacturing. Well, in Colorado, I quickly learned that retail is very important too. Plus your tier levels and R and B, it's service there is and funding and all that on the side. So, in Colorado, most of us in economic development do well. Especially in small communities like well, in Berthick. We're usually one or two people staffs. And we are charged with doing both or all of the above. And that's what makes the job fun and interesting, for me anyway. I've been on both sides. I've been with large organizations. But being in a community like Berthick, it's really fun because you get the, you really get to lock the sleeves. And you get to know your businesses. And you get to also stay in touch with the state and personal workers and all that good. So it's an exciting position, I feel. That's why I'm still at Berthick. So with that, economic development, it's a collaborative effort between business governing the community. It's also a process. You like to say, and it's true, it's a long-term process. But economic development doesn't happen overnight, especially when it comes to me. We've got sites in Berthick. Since I've been there, a site in, in, an example is the Jackson Industrial Site. It's right on First Street. Anybody, you all remember Berthick? You've been to Berthick? All 287 hours, Long Street. It's a beautiful site. Fifty-eight acres, flat as a board. Utilities all around it. Excel has a line coming right down the east side. Their gas line comes right in the road. And it's been sitting vacant before I got there. It was vacant when I was with them in CEDC. And there's just some things that are out of your control. The owner of this site wants to sell the whole thing. And he doesn't really want to be a developer. And there's some other nuances with ownership. But it's on paper, you would think this site ought to go. It really should. I always thought that, but it's not the way. I think in the, one of the thoughts that we have as a town is to construct our new public works facility on that site. Think about five acres, eight acres, but open enough. Run the infrastructure through it, put their roads through. Or with a developer, and make it a mixed-use development, partly with a tail of Berthick. That is somewhat in the works. Probably a few years down the road, but that's what our Prime Minister, Chris, is thinking. And it would be a good idea because it's going to be, it's, it'll be around before anybody really jumps on that site because they've got to buy the whole. And put in the infrastructure. Nowadays, that's not that uncommon. It really isn't. But when you're competing against sites in Lublin, right on I-25, where the winds are very western. Or sites up here in Fort Collins, those south of us now in Mead. You've got right on I-25 in Longmont. You know, the more developer has to work to make something happen, the more less competitive you are. And the point of the points of economic development is make yourself as conservative as you possibly can. And one of the things that commercial brokers and national site selectors like do, or the way they operate is, they might have a list of areas in the country, maybe even sites, and what they look to do is eliminate things very quickly. So if you don't have the criteria, you know, if they're looking for a hundred acre site and you submit a fifty-five acre, well, that's gone. Most likely. So they eliminate that, and they narrow down the game down now. Depends on the project, five sites, and then they really begin to do anything better. What they first look to do is eliminate communities or sites that don't need the criteria. So one of the challenges of economic developers is to try to avoid them being eliminated. Because the more you're in the search, you might not win this one, you might win the next one. And so that's one of the, the bulls of economic developers in Berthick. Try to remain in the hunt as long as you can for as many site projects as you can. Because eventually, the site will go, or your building will go, or something. And next slide, this is just a quick slide on, oh, went ahead a few times. This is just a slide that shows what prime, how primary jobs manufacturers work. You know, they build products. And then they sell them. And then they're paid. That payment comes back. They pay their employees who live, work here in Wellington or Berthick. And then those employees take, loot with some of that money, and they spend it in their community. Whether it's the gas stations, the restaurants, you name it, whatever it is. And then that money circulates in the community. So the more, that's why for the most part, economic development, it most parts of the country focuses on this. And not so much retail. Because retail truly follows the primary jobs. But it's a little bit different. For the most part, economic development is, you know, across the country, focused on primary jobs. Yeah, this is a good slide, please. This is a good one. One word was private economic development. Well, there isn't really one word on it. Because we are, we are most jacked about trades. We know a lot about a lot of things, a little about a lot of things, and maybe a lot about one thing. And I'm just using, you know, if you talk rather Stacy and Windsor or Stana in Fort Collins, they may disagree with that a little bit. But we know a lot about most everything that's going on in the community. Yeah.
What primary is Yalit, can you tell them?
We've got a number. We've got a number of small machine shops on Southern Street. Our largest employers are some major technologies. They employ about two million seventy people. They make rocket engines. It's a, and that's a great.
Are they fairly new? What did you hear from the end?
First major committed about 2017. And that's a good, that's a good question because how they got to birth. I don't remember. I mean, somebody just would, mostly thoughts that come across my desk or it was vast, but is, you don't know who's. He should come from Brooklyn, or National Site Selector, or Upstate Colorado. And so this one came across my desk, and it was somebody's looking for twenty acres. Probably on an air, near an airport. And I'm thinking, well, we're not near an airport. They're looking for twenty acres in Metro Denver. I'm thinking, what's a hundred like that? Those sites, you all over the place. They're really on. But the site, but it stayed out there, stayed out there, stayed out there. There must be something unusual about these sites. It's what still happens. In Berthick, on County Road Seven, it says you come off the interstate, and you go start going in the Berthick. You come through a little, little mountain with the first ton range company. You go south about a mile and a half, and up on top of the hill, that's where Ball Aerospace used to be, to make one of three facilities. And one of those facilities was a building ten thousand square feet. But the unique thing about, feature about that building was and is, it was made to test engines. The walls are reinforced, it's completely burned on the all sides except the south. The big doors opened up to the south. So when they tested engines, all the noise went up. Well, this company happened to be ours to make the technology. And what they were looking for was a site to build a building that do just that. Away from the residential areas, so they could test these one engine. A broker on that site, Tom Resnick, who's, who's the real tech, found out about that. And he submitted that, that site had the three buildings. And just Nick, who I know now, we meet monthly, Nick saw that, and he saw that one building. That test facility. That's exactly what they were looking for. And that's why they're in Berthick. They have since purchased the whole, it's their ninety acres. It's now their corporate headquarters. In addition to that building, there was a small things. Engineering building, admin building. And when you came on site, you had to stop in there, sign on. And then there was, there is this fifty thousand square foot building on the site where Ball did all their manufacturing. Well, that fifty thousand square feet is now their corporate headquarters. They've expanded that test facility. You know, there's two, they can test two different size engines. And that small building is now their epicenter. So when they test, there's engineers and they're following that test. If they need to turn it off, boom, they shut it off. That's how sometimes it works. Talking of it, it's just, we happen to have, and it truly is the only building, the only other building in Metro Denver, it's like, the only other building like that is Lockheed Martin?
Right.
Yes. They have the other one, and they use it. So it was, we just happened, we just happened that. But since that time, we foster a very good working relationship with the company. I meet with their CEO of Monthly, or coffee, or local coffee shop. Pretty much, I get up and get requests, hey, can you introduce me to our some major technologies? Because now they've got, they've got a name for themselves. They're one of, they're in the aerospace industry. What's unique about them is although they're like two hundred and seventy people, they're small for the years. And they're very nimble. They can take on projects relatively quickly if they are requested and they so, and they think it fits into their business model. And they have done that with the department that does. But we meet monthly, and I get requests from United Way, other known brokers, and so I call them, hey Nick, do you want me to continue forward these inquiries to you, or is there like HRs and that? Send it to me, well, and I'll take care of it. But that's the kind of relationship we have. And that's what we wanted to, that's what we have with most, I have with most of our manufacturers.
That you work with other towns too? Like, in that situation, if they're looking at bringing somebody else in, you didn't have a particular someone, you work with other towns?
Yes, that's a thing. That's another good question. We have a code of ethics. With all the, all my colleagues in Irving, Oregon. That code of ethics more applies to, say there was a company in Wellington that was going to expand and was looking at the site in Berthick. I would call Wellington and say, there's a company from Wellington that's looking to expand, and I'll just let you know, you might want to go talk. And we do that. It's happened. We have a company right now that's from, in Lublin. They're looking at purchasing a senior eighteen acre site in Lublin, in Berthick, which we hope they do. It's been sitting vacant for as long before I got there too. So we're, please, but, but I call, my colleague, Mercy, New Orleans, Mercy, ABC Company from Lublin, we met once, with their broker, you know, and I explained it. At the end of our meeting, I explained to the company, hey, I'm going to do this. You have code of ethics, I'm going to contact my colleague in Lublin, and you know, I said, okay. He said, sure. Sometimes a company will say, you know, we're looking, then, you know, I'm like, we gotta hear it. But generally, yes. So there we are. Like a person major in any company is looking at Berthick, and we just can't, we don't have the site. The site we have is just as a warning, the building we have just isn't working. We want to keep them a little going.
Until you go out, go out, whatever that term is. You work with the others.
What I would probably do, there we go, in that case, I would call both Upstate Colorado and Laramie County Economic and Workforce Department. And say, hey, you want to, you want to keep this company more than going out, why don't you guys do a search now? That doesn't happen that often, but it does. It does. It does.
So you try working with these people in the same position here, man, or you work with Patty or?
It depends on, well, I'd probably call, nothing you'd skate them, but it, I don't.
Ms. Garcia.
Yeah.
Patty, just fine. Thank you.
And one thing about running Colorado, you know, I think if my colleagues are doing well, they'd be awesome. But I really appreciate, is we do work very well. There's no, there is competition. But, but it's not to the, to the, where, you know, if I lose this company, you're not going to get it. You know, I don't care where I go, if there's not Berthick, I don't care where you go. That happens in Denver. It does happen in other places. It doesn't happen here.
More constructive competition than it is aggressive competition.
We want to keep them a little going. Our workforce, which we've done a lot of analysis on it, it's almost fifty-fifty. People going from Laramie County to Weld, and Weld, every day, every day. That's why thirty-four is like, set eighty thousand cars on in a day, as much as almost nine twenty-five. And then out to Severance and all the other, to Windsor, you know, there's. So our, our economy is truly reachable. As much as we, like I say, let's keep everything in Berthick, let's keep everything. Now, there are, anyway, but that, we, my colleagues and myself, all of us know what we're doing. That's what we're doing. That's all the good questions. Keep it going.
I think one of my additional questions that stems off of that, maybe a comment that you had just mentioned is, we want to keep businesses in northern Colorado, but option, it's been not so much lately, we see a lot more involvement from partners like Berthick, Timna, Fort Collins area like that. But when you look at modes of transportation, and we look at inclusion, even health departments, items like that, how does Wellington get to a point where they are actually thought of in like the northern Colorado level? Because I think that that's often bypassed a little, and I don't blame anyone, and I don't think it's anyone's fault.
That's a good, that's a, that's a, it's another good question. Just to give you my experience in Berthick, and I'm thinking to relate to your question is, when I, when I was hired in Berthick, I was hired part-time to help our town administrator move through our community and get the word up. And B, and B, let people know that Berthick is interested in operating business and wants to be a player at the table in northern Colorado. And he was, Mike was a great town administrator, finance director. He didn't like doing this. He knew me, and so we met. I said, no, I'm going to go do that. And that's one of my prime directives. That's what I did for probably the first two, not the only thing I did. But first two years, meeting with, not just meeting with, meeting in contract. The players all in Laramie County, somewhat well, the most, because we're most in there. All the commercial brokers that I still have do, I don't know if Jackson would be of interest at Berthick. In Irving, Colorado, in the Denver natural area. I was in Denver quite a bit. Meeting with the firms, not so much individual brokers, trying to only go to Denver. So I get on their monthly agenda and take that little presentation. And you got, you got limited amount of time, so ten minutes. But it was more about building that relationship. And if, they may not remember anything that I showed them, but they had my card, and hey, yeah, what was here three months ago? I'll get one of them. Or something like that. So that's, yeah, you want to, that's going to be important in terms of Wellington being, being recognized and what, when issues or opportunities come up at the county level or at the state level. You know, driving to Denver from here, I know, I didn't, it's not, it's not the most pleasant drive, you know, when you, of course you get plus you get to Denver.
Yeah.
And I made a point to be in Denver. Attend all the Metro Denver EDC meetings, other, other meetings, whether the Metro Denver Chamber is putting on meetings, events. You know, and then the Colorado Leadership Bureau has, they call them events, but they're these, those, both, it's been different subjects, retail, industrial, multifamily. The subject matter that changed to commercial brokers. And I made a point to be in those. Now, look at the agendas, anybody, pull up, pull up the Leadership Bureau, and just remember the retail summit two weeks ago. And you'll see, just pull up the agendas, and you'll see the brokers that are attending, and all presenting, right? Those are the ones that are presenting. And that's, that's probably the people that I stand with the most. Usually the ones that are presenting. I mean, there's others besides those that are presenting. But, but one thing you'll notice with Colorado State, those events, it's, you know, all of us, the same people presenting, whether it was a multifamily, industrial, retail, commercial tourism. And those tend to be the knowledge. So, now, I may, I still go to those, not as much now, because I stay in touch via emails and other ways. But that's another good event. And that's something I think you might want to consider. Having somebody do that, if you, if you're looking to make Wellington more visible. You know, one thing about that, that's a good question. I mean, this is not in my notes, but that's our, no, 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 this is perfect. This is perfect. You got to have something to sell. Brokers, they don't, they don't, I mean, they're all good, and they're nice, but they're not, if you don't have something to sell or show them, it'll be a nice, nice meeting, but they're not going to, they're, 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 keep in mind, you got to put your money in their shoes. They're off to make money for themselves and their client. So if they're going to go, there's not the least resistance. And I go back and forth with those, oh, we got this site, you know, well, you just, I got a better site over here. And so you could be not just going there, but you do go have something tangible to present. Same thing with ICSC. Have you heard of ICSC? It's in the downtown shopping centers. I've been to four or five. And what's, what's, what's unique about it, right, from an economic development point here? There's very few communities that most people rely on. Because most of the communities don't rely on sales. Colorado does. So at ICSC, you'll, there'll be a number of communities that are with groups. I don't, I don't get a booth, I won't afford, I make a plumbens before the nerd, I mean, I just, it's so big that it's, it's, I don't think it's worth it. And then I go about my small town administrative city. So that, and that's, that's another great event. But even there, I'm not, there, what's unique about that is you truly only have like ten minutes. Each meeting lasts like ten minutes. So you got to be ready to sell and show them why, in this case, Wellington is a good fit for ABC Company, Red Sox Company. You got this site, here's the demographics. I put out a specific brochure for that event. I very, I used to take like twenty times. No, I take five. Because I just think, nobody wants to pick up stuff. I just follow the email outlaws with that same information, but, but you got that, that's, you know, if you're going to go and start being a little proactive like them, it's important to have slides, buildings, opportunities to show themselves.
Looks like Trusty Gator has his hand raised in Zoom.
Oh, Trusty Gator, you have a question?
Yes, I did. With the, we're discussing, like, we want to make sure that we're not getting out of it too early or out of consideration. When you're looking at the different things that the developers are considering, is one of those either giving some kind of fee waivers or tax breaks? Is that typically something that we have to be considering if we want to be competitive?
Yes, but not right, I mean, not right up front when you're meeting. Generally, they're going to want to know if you have, what they're looking for.
Okay.
And then when it comes to incentives, incentives, most of us are pretty, we pretty much all have a similar incentive. Other, the larger communities, I mean Lublin, Fort Collins, they have also their own lot of money that the, that their city councils set aside, potentially incentives. Berthick's not like, we don't have that. But, but yeah, we do things like fee waivers, expedited permitting, sales tax rebates. That usually does not come off right to me. If it does, and depending on the economic level, to me, that's sort of a weird way. And that's happening. It does happen. The media of the box, they'll want to know, what are you, what are you going to give us?
Okay.
And you want to be prepared for that. I mean, you do want to be prepared. But often, if they're doing that right out of the chute, then they might be in your community for five years, until the next better deal comes along. And then they're going to hold on to someplace else. You want somebody that's going to be in your community with a foreseeable future. Now, things happen. Economy changes, things happen, companies go out of business, restaurants go out of business. That, those happen. But I like to think in the middle of that, they're shocking for the next best offer. So yeah, I, we have, Berthick has an incentive policy. Most of us, most of the community have an incentive policy that's on their website. And we're pretty similar. Except for maybe the larger communities, where they have maybe five hundred thousand dollars in an economic development program. That they're willing to put towards that, that right project to make it happen. So that's a good question, but it's good to have that, to have a policy in place. And if you, if you want to look at ours, you can look at ours, or yell it over. It's going to be pretty standard for most of the smaller communities, I think, for some of the work.
Excellent. Thank you. I appreciate the answer.
Yep.
Do you have any enterprise zone? You guys have any?
We are whole province of them.
Okay, so you give tax breaks?
We don't. It's a state program.
Okay.
Enterprise Zone Program is a state-run program. That there are various tax credits for new jobs, new investment, if the company pays health insurance. There's a, there's a series, there's a number of tax credits for business eligible. It's, you're, the program.
Will we set up like that?
No.
No?
But the thing is, you don't have to be set up at the town to qualify for some of these incentives. So the county themselves have incentive for it, correct?
No, this, no, that's, that might be different.
Okay.
The Enterprise Zone Program is run and administered by the state of Colorado. And the way you become eligible, it started, I think the first, it started ten, it was fifteen years each. But about five, maybe six years ago, the state remapped, re-identified in every community based on their population and census tracts. Unemployed, well, unemployed, every, every community. So that, that's when Berthick, when they mapped Berthick. And so it happens that pretty much the entire community is in Berthick.
But we just looked, in 2019, there was a revision. We are.
That's well. Pretty much.
So no, the east side of the interstate was not.
Well, that's correct.
Portions of it, yeah.
So you would, you would want to, that would be part of your incentive, but that would be within your incentive policy. You hope to be on your website. A lot of businesses are not eligible.
That they can apply for them?
Yes. And so what I do annually is send an email out to all the businesses who wrote it, pretty much, letting them know that they're eligible. who wrote it, pretty much, letting them know that they're eligible. If they have done certain, you know, if they do things, if the application's a one-pager.
It's not difficult.
It's easy. So, everything is online. It's on our website, but you can go right to the state of Colorado. It's a one-page, but you have to be pre-certified before you can access the credits. Each county has an EZ Zone Administrator. And ours is in the, over here, in the, in the.
In the county workforce center.
Yes. Yep. So, low-hanging fruit for your, if you wanna begin to communicate with your businesses in a way that may bring value to them, let them all know that, hey, thanks for not aware. You're in our enterprise, you're in the states, you're, you're in Wellington Enterprise Owens, makes you eligible, oh, look, these, these credits. Now, and then it'll be up to them and their accountants for them to make one.
Lately, from more of that, such.
You would wanna do that. I would do it like, I'd do it every year, early December.
Well, you can get education credits. So, yes, they have education credits, but they also have vehicle, vehicle purchase credits as well.
Yes, no, you're right.
Very utilizable and not complicated. We've actually used the technology credits and um, learning credits we pay for all of our employees for their education. It doesn't pay for all of it.
Yeah.
But it helps match the cost of some of the, but they, the way that I had read it is it, even if that business up and leaves, you still leave that, that employee, even if they're not with your business anymore, it still promotes that education statement in your community, which is why you qualify more. But that's available now. So, that's available to anybody now, because we utilized it as a business here.
Yeah, yeah.
So, that's something, that's education, and you can go out now to local businesses to discuss what their accountants.
What I would do, what I try to do, especially with businesses, and those of you who own a business. I don't flood our manufacturing networks. Because I know, and I, I think, I got an open rate that's pretty darn good, because I make a point to let them know, and I don't just log in, you're not gonna get an email from me once. It's not gonna happen. I'm gonna email you when I think it's informational enough value to your business. And, um, so if you do something like that, I just received an email that the, um, proposed the, um, internship program for the, for the Colorado Manufacturing Partnership. Um, that would be another value add to those businesses who are looking to bring on interns, high school interns this year, this summer. It's free. Students are paid and all that. I mean, I say free, but you go through all the the requirements, but it's free in the business. It's those kinds of things, those kinds of value-added programs or information that are, will send to our businesses, so that when they receive, when they, when they see something coming from Burton Economic Development. And they go, yep, this is what I will, from which, from well, I know it's, you know, it's one meeting and all. It's a good point. And those two, that internship, I love, you have any businesses that might be interested in hiring on some high school interns this summer? But it's, it's open market.
The trades are good for it.
Yep, yep. Um, another thing, I'm just giving you a note, these questions, just, a lot of this stuff is in my notes. So, hopefully it's of value to you. The Noco Manufacturing Park, you all familiar with it, that organization? You might, you know, I don't know how many manufacturers you have in Wellington. But I'd make it, you know, as part of that, if you send them an email with this kind of, I would, I would say a few things about Noco Manufacturing Partnership, put the link to the website there, and then the ball's in the game. Just make them, make them aware of this organization. It's been around now almost ten years. And it's, it's an organization for manufacturers run by them. People like me support it, economic development support it, but, but we don't make the decisions. They make the decisions of what they want to be. Every year, the, I mean, their big, their big event is their, their trade show over here at the ranch. It's in the spring of every year. And, um, but it's, it's no, it's just little touches that you can, you can have with your businesses that's bringing value to them. Whether they access it or not, it's up to them, but, but it's the kind of thing that I think will bring credit home in your, in your activities. If you keep it up, you know, till we soon.
Did you, should, did you?
Yeah, please don't, don't go past this one. Uh, go back one more second. These questions have been actually, so what is economic development? I shared at the very beginning, for a town like Wellington and Burton, it's retail, it's, it's recruiting manufacturing, it's, is working with your retailer, your, your small businesses in our town. It's, it may be like, I'm involved in broadening right now. I'm working on a DDA with our businesses. It's, it can be a lot of different things, all with the idea of improving the economy and the prosperity of the community. And that's one of the things that's, I don't wanna say unique, but interesting about working in this small community. Like in Burton, with the one, like the ones here. Because you get to be involved in all of that. Assuming you're lucky, then, but, but for like a Burton, it, it opens up so many things. The other thing it does, especially for the retailers, um, it helps, what can you do to bring credibility to the audience? When you're involved in like a, a, a broadband, now the DDA promotion, or not, I can't say promotion, I'm supportive.
All right, explain DDA, just so, because we do have residents that watch, and they might not understand what a DDA is.
It's a downtown development board. It's, it's similar in some regards to a Main Street program that you all have. The difference between a Main Street program and a DDA is a couple things. Main Street is all volunteers. And you focus on solid improvements, events, things like that to bring more people down there. The DDA is that, but it's quasi-jurisdictional, yes? It's, it's, it's formed by the, by a vote of the businesses in the, in the DDA district boundary. So, if you, if you own a business or property in the, in the district boundary, you get to vote. If you live and have a business outside that boundary, you don't vote on what goes on inside that. The other thing that's different being that Main Street is volunteers, they go up the grant money, donations, things like that. The DDA is funded by a tax increment that's generated in that, those districts. You also, the district board, or the district, can also vote, increase their own taxes, one to five mils. That's a vote of the property owners and businesses within the district, not the community, not you, it's board, it's the board. The DDA has its own separate board, government board. It's appointed by you all. I say you all, town boards, city bouncers. You all appoint the members to that board. Then they develop their own policies, procedures. The only other oversight that you would have is you approve their budget every year. So, you approve the budget, and you appoint the board members. Other than that, it's a separate board with policies, and they decide how they're gonna spend that increment in the district. And we're gonna do that right now, but.
How's it been received so far?
The business is all on it. So, uh, uh, the majority of it. I'm gonna be having a meeting very shortly, hosting a meeting for the residents in the district. And that could be a different conversation. Because the residents may be, when they start thinking about this, you mean, my taxes potentially go up? What am I getting in return? And you try to explain, you know, if, if, if the DDA is successful, which it is, probably, then there's gonna be a lot more people coming downtown. Property values are gonna increase, because there's gonna be increased investment, increased new investment in the district. Your property affects the district, was very close to it. So, you have, your property has an opportunity increasing though. And also, what we're doing, and I can't say, I don't know how others have done this, but we're looking at the boundary, and there's gonna be some residents in the boundary. And we think, and you create a DDA, you're creating one for thirty years. So, you think about that, thirty years out. So, those residents, probably, in thirty years, there might be businesses, businesses downstairs, apartments up, who knows? I mean, a lot of things can happen if, if investment continues to occur, occur in that core district area, those are joining problems. I'll let you know how that goes in a few weeks from now. We'll see how they, how the residents feel about it. But for the most part, the business is like, one, one thing about a deep north for Burton, the reason why we're looking at it right now is because there's a good amount of land in the proposed district is greenfield. It's gonna be developed. We know it is. We're getting its own commercial. We, we know it's gonna be developed in the next three years, five years. Because we're getting plans for it, right, Colorado State Journal. And so, when you have a greenfield site, and we own two sites in the district, so the property taxes on our site are zero. When we sell those sites for a mixed juice, which we're in the process of negotiating right now with the department, to develop that stuff for mixed juice, it's gonna go from our rules, our program, our, 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 to this devote, that property tax is gonna go from zero, I don't know, ten, twenty, thirty thousand dollars, that increment goes to the district. Same thing with all those greenfield sites. When those change, when those begin to develop, those property taxes are gonna increase, right increment like I was saying, is all gonna go to the district. When you create a DDA, what if, maybe you wanted to let me tell you about this?
No, please. And, and as long as, right there, I'm, I'm, it's fascinating to hear about, so.
Okay. Um, these questions are actually, you like this, you're very good, thank you. Like, the, the property owners and the businesses within the district went to vote. And when they vote, they've got three votes. One to create the DDA. That's probably easiest, easiest of the two. The second is to basically go into, to bowl, using that increment for projects. And that just depends on the community. You know, maybe, maybe, maybe that quarter needs a new water line. Or whatever, you wanna, you wanna redo all those sidewalks, all the streetlights, you know, whatever. So, that's the second vote. Allows the DDA to go into debt basis.
But doesn't, the, the town vote into that, correct?
No.
This comes from the DDA's own.
They're, they're making their own decisions. It's separate from the town. The third is, it allows, if it's approved, the third vote is to allow the DDA to increase the mill rate taxes, one to five mils.
Only in that district?
Only in the district.
Got it.
And so, for example, in, in Loveland, Inglewood, I think, those two for sure. I was thinking maybe Littleton, but, uh, they passed the DDA. The mill increase didn't pass. The bonding, the, the debt tax, but the increasing the mill rate did not pass. And in, in Loveland, they went back three, two or three times, and it never passed. The difference between the increasing the mill rate and moving the tax income, what you do, one of the things you have to think about in DDA is, how are you gonna, how's it gonna fund itself to administer in DDA? One of the ways they do that is through that mill increase. The tax increment, any attorneys know? You may notice that. The tax increment is generally used, supposed to be used for projects. Some of that money is, I mean, you can use, and if you, if you have a project, and you need to administer that project, which you would, then you can use some of that tax increment to administer that project. Most DDAs are all, are using some of that increment for administration as well. There hasn't been any court cases that challenge it, statutes of law, as I, I'm not an attorney. From what I understand, the statute's pretty vague in that area. It's not explicit, it's saying you can't use it for this purpose. And so, a lot of the DDAs do use a small portion of that. For that. But generally speaking, the startup, and you think about that, I mean, although, like in Burton's case, with all the greenfield, it's still gonna be five, ten years before any, any significant money is coming in where you can do significant projects. Now, you can borrow against that anticipated revenue requirement, couldn't you? I don't know, I wouldn't suggest doing, I mean, some DDAs do it. If you, if you know for sure this money's coming in, you can borrow against that. Um, so, starting up a DDA, there's, in most cases, there's an agreement between the governing body, union, that puts a lot of funds into that union for the first, first three of five years. At Windsor. Windsor's still running. And you have to do it for a long time, because their DDA, their, their DDA is pretty much old-town Windsor, from what I understand. So, our case, in Burton's case, let's be here in Burton, the proposed district goes from the roundabout of First Street, Two, First Street, all the way out to Two Eighty Seven.
Ah, oh, okay.
We're taking in, we're taking in that west part of Burton, where right now, it's, 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 it's greenfield, but it's, in three years, five years, it won't be. You'll do the job. That's the increment that works out. And that's one of the reasons why we think now's a good time, and the businesses, after they explained it to them, you might wanna think about this. Um, and that's what's different about Burton than maybe a Windsor. Because you wanna have.
There's just that little block, is it like Two Seventy to?
You can go on the website, I don't know if that's, so, if you, if you're thinking about, if anybody's thinking of just creating a DDA, and you can't, and there's not any new projects coming on board, um, you can create it, and it'll be a long time before there's enough revenue there. So, you, it's on board you, everybody. And you don't create anybody. That's, 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 that's the bad choice of words on my part. Um, it's the businesses. But if they, if they move in that direction, they would be talking to you well before that. They get some sort of, I know you can't make a lot of difference to me, but and some sort of commitment from you all to saying, we'll put so much money towards this one up. I mean, they're gonna have to hire people, or, or, I, in person. I mean, you could have a lone executive, like, I'm pretty, I think you could do that. It just, each community's different, so depending how that is worked out. But, so the, the businesses um, generally like it for those two reasons. One, it's money coming into the district. And a good number of our businesses have a business in Burton, uh, uh, in the district, they may actually live in mine. But if you don't, if you don't live in the district, you don't have a sense. So, those businesses that have a business in Burton, who live in West Burton, or Loveland, or Longland, they'll vote on it. And that's the way it should be. I mean, that's not, that's not a negative, that's, that's the way it should be. This gives them a vote of what goes on within their, within the district, in the businesses they own. And that is a penalty.
It gives them more control over their investment?
Yes.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Or trustee Gator?
Yeah, so I just had a quick question when you were talking about the tax increment. And I wasn't sure if this is only, because it sounds like it applies when you've got a, something that currently has no property taxes, and then property taxes get added in. Those would go to the DDA? I know one of the big things, this has hit more residential than business lately, but we've had huge increases in property taxes this last year or two. In those cases, do those increases also go to the DDA?
That's a very good question as well. I mean, I just met with, um, the assessor while we were in the last week, I had had a discussion with an attorney who specializes in DDAs. Nothing gets any of returned, but, but one thing I'm, it's, it's been recommended to me by more than one person, and that hasn't been. It would be important for, in our case, Birthing, if you move forward, either your attorney or higher attorney knows DDAs. So we, we, we've asked our, we asked our talent attorney, he doesn't know that much, but she will. And if, and if, that is extremely, because that, that, that law is a little bit different. Uh, but to your point, um, question, it's not just property that's not being taxed. I mean, the, the properties is in, in West Birthing, there's own commercial, so there's property tax there. To me, it's, I don't know, five thousand dollars. That's too low, isn't it? That's how, it sounds low, but just use that as a, for discussion purposes. Developer comes in and puts a, a, like, a Dairy Queen on that site. Well, that five thousand dollars is going to go to this same twenty-five. That twenty thousand dollar increment would go to the DDA.
Okay.
Now, I learned this, this is something, not all increments, as I just, as I was explaining to you, automatically go to the DDA. And that was a surprise to me. It somewhat depends on the assessor and how he or she sees that increase in value. If it's just natural increase, he or she might go, you know, that's not part, that's not, that's, that's just a natural increase. I'm not going to count that. Discussions with, which we had with Bob, and it was preliminary, but it's, you would want to have those kind of discussions as your, as the businesses are starting, if they're considering going down.
So I just want to interject real quick, because I know you probably have tons of other stuff to talk about.
No, it's, no, I'm, I'm going to talk about whatever you want me to.
So, so the reason I want to tell you is about four years ago, Main Streets had a pretty significant conversation about DDAs, and they had that discussion, there was minimal traction. And then, um, I spent a lot of time in the Windsor DDA, kind of worrying about it, that, that group and that board, a couple of people, people are interested if any businesses, you know, would like to get together and learn more about their process and how that can key. Um, they were open to doing that. I did do a small sample size of some downtown businesses, there was minimal tracking. So, uh, we have minimal incremental opportunities either, so incremental opportunities that we're talking about, it's not significant. I don't know if that's the right solution for us, it's definitely worth looking into it. It's not like I said, the business community, from, from my experience, hasn't shown a lot of traction.
Yeah.
I would like to compare that against our urban renewal authority. I think that might be more applicable, and it would apply to the entire town potentially, rather than just downtown. But, but either way, I mean, I think we had this very hard, that DDAs are a great opportunity. But I was kind of hoping, if there's anything else in your presentation, if we could.
Yeah, yeah.
I apologize, because I did have one additional question. At the end of this, so say the DDA fails.
Yeah.
What happened with loan amounts, items like that?
Well, if, if, if it doesn't pass, then the bank stands what? The money goes back to the general, the money, making all the money goes to the general fund and the town.
And then you could try to deny it.
Yes.
Got it. Okay, so that was my curiosity, is if it doesn't, so if they, if anybody chooses to go this way and it doesn't work, and you draw those on DDA lines, correct? Someone else, does someone else draw it for you, or do you draw those lines?
It's a partnership with, initially, the way, the way it operated, the way we did it, and we are still doing, I mean, we're, is when we thought it was a good idea. So we initiated the discussion with the business community. We had a series of meetings with the business community to see if they were interested. After those meetings, it was pretty obvious to me, they were interested. And so now, then we had, we drafted a proposed district boundary that they're in our fleet. As they're sitting around, they're learning the distance, so the, so the ball was now more, that's in their court, I'm support, I, we cannot promote it. You cannot promote it, the town?
Got it.
It's got to be initiated, not promoted by the business community.
Got it. So we shouldn't even be having those engaging conversations to promote something like that. Unless they come to us.
Yeah, I mean, you could initiate and see if those are interested.
Yep, got it.
See if there's interest, if there's no, if you did this already, if there's no interest, can move on to GRAs, or, you've got a pretty good, seems to me, seems to me a pretty good mainstream program, but I mean, I, I don't really care. So, I mean, I, I think the purpose, whether it's a DDA, Main Street, in some respect, your eyes are a little different, but the point is, increase activity near you.
Got it.
That is, I mean, that's the primary goal. With the, with the DDA, you have money to do. With, with, with the Main Street, it's grant money if you're successful in all of it. You don't have money for any of these. But they're both, the goals of both are very similar. Increase investment, bring people down, enter down to the destination.
Got it. So you can't have both, it's one or the other?
Oh, yeah, no, 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 you could, there's multiple, um. Loveland is a, Loveland is a good or bad example, there's both four organizations, we have a mainstream program, it's inactive. We also have, just started up the, uh, Main Street, or I think they're downtown, Main Street Merchants Group. They just decided to come together, they just did a chocolate walk on Valentine's Day, none of those kind of things. So they're out, they're not going to, they would not go away if a DDA or something like this created. We would help, we would bring them all together, and each would have a different purpose.
Okay, sorry. So, go ahead. I just wanted to make sure that there was additional options, or why one possibly went dormant, but I'll ask that question later.
I think, well, I've got thirty minutes left, um, just to give you a heads up.
One of the things, um, this, this, don't mind. Yeah. Right here. This looks like a basic slide, core activities, economic development. But if you look at that, and I say button there, because this is, this is standard, this is what I always, you know, present for Birthing. And I do all of it. Pretty much, I do all of this, this one particular. And I'm not the only one, it's not, I mean, it's an economic development. What I don't see there is marketing, public relations. Today, that is so important. Manage yourself. I don't know, I don't know. What people think, what I did, I didn't, I don't know, I didn't ask any of the brokers. But since we hired Stephanie, and she, you know, hired, we, we, we have, we opened up a, we created a new position, indication about our business. But then Stephanie, who was working for both of them, we've got the position, she's international. She worked for the whole town, but she also helps in the profile. To get the word out, your social media, your website, all things. Keeping, keeping the messaging current, aligned, exciting. That's something you want to, you want to, you do want to do. And, um, along with that, which is my, my suggestion, you mind? The website needs, the economic development website needs some work.
A lot more. I looked at it today before our.
It's, um, I know you have Civic Plus, but we use Civic Plus for our website. My website is separate, I say. Economic Development, it's separate, although it's linked. Um, you can, you can use, and that, mine, ours needs to be updated. But if you want to use, just go look at Birthing's, and I'm not saying you do this. Because I was looking at bringing mine into Civic Plus, Civic, I could use Civic Plus, but save me money, because it's ministry, April by the town. Mine's separate, comes out of my budget. But if I could do what I'm doing now with Civic Plus, I would do it. I would do it. Save me some money, easy. But, um, yeah, if you look at, um, just, just check out other websites. And I do, I do a free line, no, I mean, there's better than others. Um, and I'm not saying Birthing's is, is top notch. But I think it does what, um, what a website, it's easy, you know, in some respects, but, but, um, the audience, who do you, who is going to be, who do you want to be looking at the economic development website? Business development. I think for you all, you have business development, you have economic development, it's your top top names. You might want to bring yours together, unless it's business development. That, that, that's your, for economic, that's your fund. I noticed, um, I want to LoopNet, I think LoopNet has like sixteen sites. Which is cool.
Here in Wellington?
Yeah.
Awesome. So honestly, I didn't even know that as trustee, so what's it called, LoopNet?
LoopNet, and all the brokers use, I mean, it's, yeah, they use, but LoopNet's pretty standard, but, but when, if you go to mine, and I'm not, I'm not saying you do it. I'm not saying that. But I like, I like keeping control of that, not that I'm a control freak, but I want to know where our sites, what buildings are in, what sites are there. So I, I contract out with a location one, Los. Location one. And that, on my, on the website, you'll see, I think it's property search. And that's where all, all of our sites and buildings are listed. The other cool thing about, and it's not that expensive, it's, it's not that expensive, is Esri data is embedded in that software. So I noticed you have, you have a community chrome problem with that stuff. All of it. I mean, I think it's pretty standard operating, it all needs to be updated. I think that's me too, honest. With Esri, the data's not, it's updated on that. And you can turn off company profiles, you can, you can put it on in emails, which I often do. It's, it's, it's not that expensive, it gives you current data, reports. There's, I just noticed you did a leak, a leakage analysis.
Yeah. Twenty-nine D.
That's okay, that's good, and this, the reports are good. You could sort of do that with an Esri, so.
That's happening, by your survey.
Yes, in fact, they, they identify Esri as your source. Now, you gotta know how to use it and all that kind of stuff, but, but it's, it's embedded in the software. It's easy to use, there's different layers, if you want to put the zombies or, you know, the zoning and all that, you can do that too. For me, it's another touch point of the book. As how I use it is, you know, they'll call Travis, right, no, 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 they don't call him, we do text it, you know. We do call Travis. Travis, I noticed, um, you know, that you're hearing your signs, this building sold. Did you release it? You know, and he said, yes or no, or you need to put up a sign. Then I'll say, who, who's in it? Send me your contact information. And I do that. And it just, it keeps me, and the brokers like it too, because then I'll see that they have a site, and I'll say, hey, let me put that up on our website. Send me your, send me your, your, I usually pull their flowers off, their, their PDFs. But the photos that they have, I could go out and take photos too, but I don't do that. I ask them to send me the photos, it's another touch point with the brokers. Send me your photos, and I'll upload it to my website, and then after I upload it, I send it, we're getting, okay, that's really cool, that's a lot. How many, how many sales I help them make with my website? I don't know. Probably not that many, because they got their own websites, and they're all developing, unfolding a lot. But it's just a touch point, the relationship building with the brokers that I've maintained a good number of years now. It's, it can be embedded in your website, it's not that expensive. But I look at your website, the economic, not, I wasn't looking at the town website, I was looking at. And you could do that through Civic Plus, I'm pretty sure, and say, I don't know if you need it, do something separate, easily. If you want, if I want. I would, um, I would, I'd put it on my team list. I'll create a change of. And we talked about this for this site, um, in Birthing, and I think it might have this similar issue here, we have a chamber of commerce. But then Main Street, and now we have this new merchants group. It's something like, sixteen businesses that got together, started these activities. And, you know, just informing a lot of people, we did a chocolate walk on Valentine's Day, one or two things other. The question is, how do you, how do you develop a relationship with work?
Great.
Yeah, um, so much, I think we got, mentioning relationships. So much is relationships. Now, there are some people that are different, working on different levels, it's just, it's just the nature of, of work, work. In our case, you have a very active main, it looks really good. And you have a chamber of commerce that appears to be. You know, those two organizations could be working side by side, now, if they are, they could easily be working side by side. We have, their missions are a little bit different, but completely, could be completely different. But those are two easy organizations, I think, to set up the, uh, the swim lanes and saying, we're going to do this, and you're going to do that, and let's make this work for both of us, for the better, better than the Wellington, on Main Street. In our case, our mainstream program is dormant and fun, nobody really pays attention to it. And that's why this merchants group started up. Our chamber was still more dormant, but, but they're, someone that, someone that blows the most efficient. And they're beginning, they're really innovative, which is really cool to see, as we go in, aren't you want to be happy? Once again, separate, they're going separate, which is really cool. Because they both can meet their mission and goals, and where, and where the overlaps occur, they can work together. The common denominator in both is the town. Not just me, but the one though, the one though. And so we work to make sure that. Because the, the, the goals of, I mean, I think all these organizations are very similar. To bring value to their membership of, of businesses. To bring people and investment and activities to the corner, and to network, and your businesses network. It's on the issue. And so the, the, the better we can, same with Birthing, the better we can make, assist those organizations meet their goals, but also work for the betterment of a community by working together, the better our organization. Oh, go ahead.
Um, you guys have an amazing brand new.
Yes.
I would like to hear about how that relates to economic development, timing wise, what the considerations were, what all the life considerations have to do with economic development, anything relating to recreation.
We took from the first board.
Oh, let's go.
That's, that is important. What, what do you, um, and I can't say we built the Rex Center in the country. We didn't.
How did you build the Rex Center?
We're not like, just help them out. No, it was a fight in Birthing. It was a fight. There are those who felt that we put in a border race. And we're, went to the ballot. It didn't pass, or didn't pass in four months. Then the board discovered another way to finance the township. Went forward with it. Built it. We budgeted for, I said, we personally budgeted, we had financed about four hundred and fifty memberships. First couple of years, over a thousand memberships. It's been a great asset for our community. Initially, it was a struggle. The ones people got on about hurdle. Is being used, our, our rec. You know, our regional director, director of the center, but it's just equal. We have, we have, she, they are administering programs. From youth seniors. It's, and there's people in there every day. Um, so that was, that was a big, that was important. Now, in addition to that. This, I think, is gonna be really, and I am promoting this. To commercial brokers and businesses. What I'm sharing with them is, look at the investment Berthold's made. In our own town. We think this is a great investment for you. Because we're putting fifty million dollars in our community. And use the Rex Center. We're gonna build a lot of reading. I just finished our bike park. We're gonna, we're redeveloping our town. We put in a new pickleball, pickleball.
No, well, yeah, we have players, but we don't have.
Pickleball cards, that was. We're gonna redevelop Third Street. We're redeveloping, we're, we were. We're developing, we're developing. Um. Yeah, all of those investments total between thirty and fifty million.
Are you taking loans up for them, or are they?
Well, um. I, I introduce for. No.
So how is it being funded then?
You know, it is. It's, they're being. The projects are being phased. I don't know if you're like. Like us, when we, when we bid out the town project. It's in Reddington. It's where it's one voice of being. It was, it was a four million dollar. Always a thing about, but nothing's changed. So we're phasing that in. That's not gonna be, like, including this.
How do you see the additional income?
Um, with, of course. Of course, not the development, the development, but also coding. Was actually a benefit. Maybe like for you two, I don't know. But our, our small towns, when. There was people shopping in our town, we were talking that. Primarily. Like I think they were also coming in town too, to show the grocery store and all that kinda stuff. Our revenues increased significantly during that. And they have since come down a little bit, but they're still hard to lose in the market. Um. We paid off, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, everything is, and then like Richardson, that was another. Project we first wanted to do, it's been, it's like a basic sports park. Just north of the, the red, red, how it's almost hot, it's coming outside, beyond that lane too. Um, when we first part out the bids for that. It was something like, you know, maybe twenty million. For, for baseball games, so that's been postponed. Um, but, the point is. Is I, is I now, in fact, I made a presentation, the Remax commercial. Um, a couple of weeks ago. Another one, you know. On Loveland. Whereas when I first started, that was, that was in the, that was in my presentation. The stuff, the original. Now it's right on par. Because the point is, I said, the point I'm making is. We are, we, we feel so good about our community. We're investing this much money in the community. This is a reason why we should partner with us, under our community.
What's your safe plan now?
Well, each project's different. The arboretum might start. Constructionary arboretum. I'm glad this is next minute.
So one project at a time, so into the future, looking at adding to that recreation option, five years, ten years?
Oh, no, uh. For the next three to five years. While I shoot.
Where's that going the way?
Yeah, and also, you know, I, I gotta. I'm not speaking about. But, you know, if construction costs and everything continues to go up. It's hard, it's, it's hard, it's, you know. Um, another big thing that I was doing, that, I didn't. We must like, consider. Or also, we also have to replace things, sort of trouble. And that's, that's anywhere between thirty to sixty million. Or a lot, um. But we're also funding, we're, we're doing, but we, 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 sort of. The more, the more you. From when we think about a topic, and that, and we start to, put any large field project in progress line, it's, I don't know what. Which is, is working, it is, it is, actually. For construction. Yeah. Okay. Would that answer the question?
That was awesome. I have more, but.
No, please, please. Yeah, we think.
I want to, I want to give you some, you know, positive things, listening.
I didn't even enough, I didn't, we gotta do enough, um. You know, there's not many manufacturing sites. Really manufacturing sites. I thought we were gonna have one right next to Ursula Major Technology. That site that they're on is, they're on ninety acres. It's part of a hundred and sixty acres. Site. That. That is a true industrial site. In the earth. I mean, you know, we're, we're gonna be part of landscaping, that kinda stuff. But it's a majority. I don't know, I twenty five. It's probably not gonna happen anytime soon. But I saw that unique in that. It's, it's for those hardcore manufacturers. And you might have some of those sites in your town. That, that, I mean. And you still want them to look nice. I'm not saying you bring, that everybody can make, you know. You know, development, the standards and things like that, landscaping. But for strictly manufacturing. Um. I think those sites are few, but. On the front, on the front range. Denver North. You know. But I can look at that later, give you some thoughts. Um. Another point. This might be a little bit sensible, but it's anybody's, stability, you know. It's important. You know, Berthold was between two thousand and two thousand and ten. We grew by two hundred and thirty five years. You, 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 you think, sit down and think about that. When, you know, when I, I think about it, you almost, you had to take on, the law to make that happen. You know, and we did. We had a moratorium run in Berthold for three years. And then the board lifted that, this is all the point. I can talk to him. Yes, so the board lifted the moratorium. But we still made it very difficult for developers to get more of this. Everything was a PUD. Well, that's, that's weird. We, we since got out of the PUDs, but in the PUD, even though you approve the, the, the PUD. You, the town board, just to scrutinize everything that's presented. Within the, on that, within that development. And we did. And we did. And then the recession. There was a triple win. Um. New board, twenty ten, it's still before my town. Charged, they looked at maybe, somebody's looking at the revenues, and we need a lot, we need to raise some revenue. And they charged their new administrator. Of improving the infrastructure. And beginning to make Berthold's business grow. And trying to attract investment to Berthold. And we've been like that ever since. That's why Mike Harvey in two thousand fourteen is helping do that. You can look at, and I'm, I'm not. You can look at Loveland. Um. It's in the newspaper, it was in, it was in Biz West again today. And I'm not pointing fingers, just as an example. Is that gonna impact development in Loveland? You know, it's a big enough community. I, I don't know, it may or may not. But that's not the kind of brass. You wanna have. Um. And there's other communities out there, and so the more you can have stable. Government, you know, I mean, there's always gonna be issues, and that's just the nature of government. We've got them. You know, and. But the more you can keep it from boiling over, like it is currently in Loveland, the better off we're gonna be. Because. Businesses. Brokers, they track this. I mean, they'll go in and, I mean, they may not go and look at, what's, what's Berthold doing today? They'll just, they may do what I do, just go to the Denver tourist or the business terminals and skim them and see if there's anything there. Of note, in the negative. And maybe have somebody just, I just see what's going on in Berthold. There's no doubt in my mind. The brokerage community, as their administrative assistants or someone, whether it's CBR. All along. Just try it. Don't say anything, just try it. That does. And so you, you, you can avoid. One of its current situation. Once you have a point, a lot of communities, you know, it's all cyclical. You know, things like that happen, and hopefully it's not, doesn't continue. All that, but, but the more than. In, in the, um, seeing as a stable community, stable government, the better off we're gonna be. Um. How is, overall, how is the community? How does the community feel about the company? Do you think it's?
It has to be the right kind of foundation. So, and that's kind of what you, at least I, I absorbed from, um, just residents that we have spoke with in general. Is they still love that small town feel, that they want all the amenities, they go with that small town feel. So it's trying to figure out how to balance. The additional amenities they want, while also explaining to them that if we stay smaller. Those amenities are not attractive to larger retailers, items like that, that would like to come in and make those items available. That's at least kind of. My.
Rocking a hard place.
Feedback that we absorbed so far.
We still are to some extent. When we, uh, we began our. Our big surge in growth in two thousand fifteen. And the reason why it happened in, like, that time, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen? Is because of what happened. In pre, previous decade. When I mentioned the board was difficult to work with. A lot of these developments were presented. During that time, the developers moved their mind. Anyone do it. So we're, we're gonna, wherever they went, Windsor, Tewa, Tene, they went all the way. Changed, mindset changed in Berthold, they got. So that was because of an outreach, maybe. They tracked up. And they began to fill Berthold's slate. So they, a number of the developers, they came back and went by the same, uh. And boom, all this stuff starts happening. Can you imagine what, what are the people that are living there? They were, they weren't too happy. Cause they moved to Berthold. Cause we're a small town. They moved here from Denver, they moved over from Denver because. We're from Fort Collins. They love this people. They come to Berthold. We moved, we moved to Berthold because we didn't wanna be with all the old stuff. Well, we didn't have any, any of that. But now they, for the most part, there's not a lot. I think one of them. You know, they, they, they accepted. But the, one of them, we didn't, in the heart of it. Maybe it wasn't intentional, Jeremy, for Jeremy Yowen. We upgraded our trail system. For parks. When we began, we, we, we always had a street, um. For. Again, we, we had money now. To go out and pay the streets, improve sidewalks. People could be able to see the value of the growth. Manageable. And sidewalks and streets and stuffs.
They have an infrastructure for it to make it appealing.
Well. We had the money to do it, so I, that, I don't know if we. I'll do Chris, Chris thought it, yeah. Um, whether we actually went and thought of it that way. But in hindsight, it worked. It worked. The people began to associate the additional growth, the additional money. With sidewalks, streets.
The extra money you can afford if you're married.
That's my motivation.
One quick question.
Yeah.
Now, is part of your job helping new businesses coming into your town to navigate through all the garbage that your town throws at them?
Yes.
Not that we throw garbage, no, it's just generalized.
Right.
Yeah, so that, that's.
Part of my career.
Okay. Yeah, no, I, I spend. A good part of my time, outreach, outreach, outreach. Cause we have sites that we wanna develop. Um, even that Jackson industrial stuff, we want somebody on that. Now we're getting a mixed use development, some hardly different volume. Yes, I will. And, and I'll, my, I'm the, I'm, 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 I guess, basically, and you gotta, I'll tell people, businesses. You got an issue in town, don't worry, just give me a call. I'll get you to the right person. I'll help you get through this. And I get it, I get it, we're gonna. They're comfortable calling me initially, or after they dealt with. We have a good creative. He's been. And does a good job. But sometimes they'll, they think, oh, that's not fair, that, I, I, I'm gonna, somebody call me. And it's usually, she's always. White. I just soften the blow, I guess, and hope you're getting the process. But yeah, I am.
Help people navigate.
And I get questions about a lot of different, funny things. And they'll call about, and that's what I'm mean, I mean, I don't wanna get my phone, I don't wanna. But it all goes, you know, so, and they'll get stopped, and I just. Refer them to the right person. I, we don't want people to make a call. Make one call at a time, all, refer to the right person. And welcome.
And once that one of your incentives actually have a possibility. I think that's, that's super.
That, that of all the incentives. Saves them time and money. You save them time, you save them a ton of money. So. A lot of communities say that. But to put it in effect, a small community, we have to do that. We, if we can expedite permitting process, and our, and our time takes the same as a Fort Collins or a border. Or a Denver. Then we're not doing something wrong. Be honest. We need a stream line to make it as, I don't wanna say it's easy, you still have your code. They still need to adhere to the code, and whatever other standards you have. But helping them get through that process is quickly and fast. Just one class, and one, then. We were meeting with a developer. And he was meeting with me and, 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 you know, on the project. And he was making, uh, changes in his cycle. He said, well, what can I bring to Berthold? If he's ready to go, we'll tell you next meeting. I mean, you have to get it to us. He said, yeah. And yeah, and he said, yes, yeah. If it's ready to go. Well, that was X community, that would be four to six months. Yeah. Think about it. That saves them a lot of money. So that is, that's something that you, you have to control. So without my time is, is coming up, um. Your last question, I hope it does help you all.
Amen.
Wait two minutes.
This baby has a follow-up item if you want. Your, your budget's over three hundred thousand for economic development, which doesn't come with me.
Yeah.
Ours won't. So if you were to pick and choose top. What would make the most difference with the least, you know, what would you prioritize as services that you guys provide? That would be most effective for us to implement?
Website.
That was a quick answer too, that was totally confident.
Relationships building doesn't help you. You just, you just, you have somebody who, who is comfortable building relationships. That is not important, but your website is your problem.
When you came on first, you said you did part-time.
Yes.
When you first did that.
Yes.
Um, so part-time. Is a good starting point, even if you have a part-time economic development, someone who can focus on those websites.
Somebody who knows, really is passionate about what they do. Still enjoys what they do, and. And is willing to be a spokesperson.
That has the sole ability to focus on being that sole, that spokesperson for the whole town.
Oh, yeah, I mean, yeah, yeah, I mean, you can hire consultants to do that too. But it. Taking nothing away from consultants, cause we, we use them, you use them, use theirs in solutions. It's fine. Personally, it's not personal, I don't think that's the way to go when it comes to this kind of.
Do you have any more time?
Yeah, thank you.
Let's take a few minutes, please, and then we'll bring, we'll go.
They're rolling. Okay.
Go on, bye.
Let's do five. Time for me to run to the rest of the event. Yes, thank you so much, it was perfect. Thank you.
Yes, I remember. Anyway, yeah, goodbye.
All right, I'm a record.
Yeah. Yes. Oh, my gosh.
I'm gonna have to come to you, right?
It's a need.
I still have the picture and all the programming and all the advertising. Yeah. Really?
And that's only the four on the next step.
Thank you. See you later.
I need water. He gets right out on Twitter, don't you?
Yeah.
Erin, thank you for being here with me, and appreciate the night for being here as well. Please to continue on this animal sheltering and animal protection and control, um, process and project. Um, one of the goals, I think, is to achieve a community-focused, efficient and cost-effective means of providing animal control and protection services. For the town of Wellington. So, um. We've talked about a couple of these things, these are actually a couple of the animal control officers that work for No Code Humane. Um, they, they look great. I think that's, Cody actually put this powerpoint together, and I think this is a great representation. Um, so again, they are properly equipped, certified and trained animal control officers that handle. Um, handle those animal control issues that, that are within their area of expertise. Um, as noted below, it says the most common needs for animal control are animals at large, contaminated or ill animals, animal bites. Animal welfare and general animal, general animal complaints, and transportation and sheltering of animals. Um. Hold on, um, so we talk about, a little bit about what those common calls are. And talking about, and, and the, and the common calls are related to safety. If you had a chance to look through the, um, survey results that I sent out earlier today. Um, a lot of residents did talk about not feeling safe, not a lot, but some residents did mention not feeling safe out. Walking their dog, they're out walking because they were afraid of dogs at large. Um, so animal control is also one of those needed pieces to enforce our, our code related to animal control. Um, sanitation, coaches for removal of waste, and then animal control also supports immunization to prevent spread of disease. Again. There we go. So here we've broken down, um, some of the items related to what, what we can do as far as what are service, the services that are provided. By other jurisdiction. So No Code Humane full service is in Laramie County, Fort Collins, Loveland, Berthwaite, and Timoth. Um, they are a partner in Severance, Windsor, Johnstown. Well County, Greeley, and Estes Park. I don't think, well, I think Well County's a.
So, let me, so Well County, Greeley, Evans, Severance. Shelter at the Evans facility. Windsor, we shelter at the Laramie facility. We don't actually do any animal protection and control calls for any of those jurisdictions. So separating the, the animal control piece from the sheltering piece. Well County at our Evans facility, we are only doing sheltering, we're not doing control.
Right, right, that's, I, I think that's where he was trying to make that separation. And, um, and those, and, and note, and you will see there in that next column, those, those entities have their own police department. So it makes sense for them to have those services provided, um, through their own police department. Um, when I was with the town of Windsor, we did, we had, there's two animal control officers that are on duty, you always have to have at least two. Um, because you can't have, can't provide the twenty-four seven. You know, availability, um, with just one person, so it does take up at least two, to cover that. Um, enforcing current, the current town's municipal code. So there's a laundry list of items here that talk about the different services that. The neighborhood services officer provides, um, Laramie County Sheriff's Office, and No Code Humane contracted services. Um, these are all items, these are all calls that, that we see, that the LCSO has seen, and No Code Humane has seen. These are the calls that would have to be covered. For animal control, however, the board of trustees decides to go. But these are, these are the items that not necessarily, we aren't required by law to provide these, but these are the, these are the calls that we receive that. We anticipate that means that, that, that means these are items that residents want the town to handle or to have those services provided. So this is everything from, um, your, oh, restriction of hogs, pigs, roosters, geanders, peacocks, and guinea fowl. As we are in the hood services officer, um, to prohibition on keeping of wild animals, which is part of the No Code Humane. So there's a whole list of items there, um, I'm not going to go through them all, but I guess they, these are important, important pieces. Related to animal head control and safety for our residents. But talking about essential services of animal control. So you can see in the, in the list below that the town handles things like barking dogs and animal waste. LCSO, um, handles like responses to stray dogs, they can handle barking dogs as well. Um, if there's a call about an animal in a hot car, they'll check in on that. Um, animal bites, they can make, they can be a responder, but then it would be turned over to No Code Humane. Um, LCSO is there to help support and be that in-between. You know, the initial call, if somebody needs to be out there right away, LCSO will go out and, and, and handle the situation, but wait for No Code Humane. To be the act, to be the responder on site. So this talks a little bit about, um, what our neighborhood services officer does, Kelly, I don't know, would you like to talk about that piece a little bit?
Sure, um, you can, you can see kind of what the neighborhood services officer takes as far as the animal control, thirty on the page before. We have everything else besides, uh, being a sample. So that's, that's on the neighborhood service officer. Um, it's about. Five and a half months ago, I guess, uh, by the way, I'm Kelly, that's right.
Sorry, I cannot introduce him, I apologize.
Down building official, and about five and a half months ago, I was asked to help out and supervise the neighborhood services officer. So we've had, we've had some service officers in the past, but, um, our team put together a software. Hired a neighborhood services officer, and implemented tracking, um, their data, we started having data on all these cases, probably, um. Oh, probably late September as we started getting, or mid-September, we started getting in our software, creating some good tracking devices. When I say tracking devices, partly what the neighborhood service officer does is, uh. We have a software that a lot of times send out a friendly mail, let's say we have, let's say we have a barking dog, first of all, barking dog is extremely tough thing to. A witness, the, um, support, so if we get a complaint, we can witness a barking dog, we'll send out a friendly mail. Same thing with the, whether it's leads or, um. Outdoor storage, you know, we've got a lot of outdoor storage in the neighborhood, service officer, whether it's the barking dogs or witnesses. We'll send out a friendly mail, if, it's usually two weeks, if we don't get response back, same thing kind of like with the barking dog. We will go another two weeks, we'll send this certified animal friendly notice. We'll do a third and final notice, and if we don't get any action by then, we usually take a further step and pass it off to, um, either Dana or, or something like that. But. In, our goal when hired a neighborhood services officer was to not be necessarily animal control, the point of contact. Partnered with, now not going to be named, formerly, we've been partnered with them all the time. So we'll, we'll get a call during work commanders, and we'll get it directed now to the local for the danger stop. We're not equipped to. Catch a dog, let alone a cat or anything else like that, we don't have anything like that, so our neighborhood service officer. Is a liaison, and quite a thought that for that part. Um, a lot of times LCSO has been covering our outbound, we're open, you know, our typical town hours, after that LCSO is, is back, you know. In the past, we've all been. Almost directing everything that No Code at some point, but we've just been more point contact. That was a little bit longer than the three points here, but I just wanted to give a little bit back down what our neighborhood service.
Thank you, Kelly, that was very good. What can we typically see on No Code Humane society if they were to handle barking dogs? Is it about the same timeframe, is it two weeks to respond to a barking dog complaint if you guys were to get a call from a resident that had an issue with barking dogs?
So we have not been handling barking dogs.
Got it, no, but if it were to transition over to you guys and services you provide already?
Sure, so our, our typical response when somebody calls about a barking complaint is that same day, they're contacted by a staff member. They chase them through the process, we'd have to talk about, since we haven't been enforcing barking for you, we'd have to figure out what the, what the process is in Wellington. We have a process for the other jurisdictions that we're in, uh, so we'd have to figure out exactly how Wellington's process is. But they're made contact with typically that same day that they make the call. Uh, and then an officer reaches out to them to discuss what the steps are in that process. Um, as an example, this is, again, this is exactly how we process, not necessarily how Wellington's is. So all of the other jurisdictions that we're in, if somebody called with a barking complaint, the first step is that there may contact, officer contacts them. Discusses the situ, the issue with them, explains that a warning is our first step. Or a warning, and then asks if they're willing to go on record, because as was stated, barking is a difficult situation to prove or for, to witness. So, all the other jurisdictions require that the person making the complaint has to go on record, that's protected in Berthwaite. Getting into like identity protection and that sort of thing, but. They are explained, they have to go on record, they give us a time and a date, and then a warning can be issued. If, if there's been a warning already issued within twelve months, within a twelve-month period prior to that, the next step is a summons. So that you're not just giving a warning after a warning for an ongoing issue. At that point, that's a statement that's filled out by the person who's being disturbed. The person who's actually being impacted, it's not us driving around listening for barking dogs. That's sent to them, and as soon as that's returned to us, then the process is started to, for the officer then reviews that information, make sure that they have probable cause for citation to be issued, and then issue a summons. Um, but it's typically. It's really, it's, the timeframe is really driven by the person making the complaint. So our typical first contact complaint is usually, they're talking to the dispatcher that day, who tells them what the next step is, and then an officer's talking to them within usually. Twenty-four hours typically lasting.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the next one, so this is LCSO. Um, do Sergeant Cherry, do you want to talk about that a little bit?
Sure, uh, so. Obviously, we've handled a lot, handled a lot of these things, uh, as you notice, you know, we're not equipped to handle some of these things. Um, one that stands out in my mind is the dog that just kept popping up over by the, at the coffee shop there. Um, over and over and over, we didn't call that the call, but the dog was never there when we would show up, so I was pretty smart to, to do this. Um, but if, if we were able to find this dog, I mean, I can whistle and I can do these things, but I have no method of capturing this animal. Uh, and then what do I do with it? Um, I can put it in, try to get it into my patrol car, we've done that. Inevitably, we have to do something with this, this dog, it has to go somewhere. As, as much as Amber at my office would love to have, you know, all the stray dogs. As, as much as Amber at my office would love to have, you know, all the stray dogs in, in the town, um, to look after when she's working. So, uh, barking dogs, um, we, we generally refer those to the town, but we do give those citizens that's will say I'm tired of hearing the dog bark, I want a response, and so we will respond to those things. Um, if we can knock on someone's door to say, hey, your dog's barking, uh, you need to bring your dog in, we will do that. Um, if we don't hear any dog barking, we'll probably just call the informant and say, um, we're not hearing anything. Um, let us know if it continues, those type of things. Um, I just was involved in a case involving dangerous, um, dangerous slash vicious animal, but it happened to be um, or five dogs that attacked one dog with, um, a woman that was walking a dog around the sidewalk. Um, and these were all five, five big huskies, um, and it took me a while because the, the owner of these dogs was largely uncooperative. And, and one talking to me, the first time I went to the door, the blinds were open. When I went to go talk to a neighbor nearby, came back, the blinds were closed. Um, but it was identifying which, which of these five dogs was perpetrator. Um, and then it was trying to determine, and I'm glad that Rego was available to, to help me out a little bit, because now I have a dog bite, um, dog on dog, what do I do with the dog? Uh, the dog has to be quarantined, um, whether it's at home or it's in, in, in one of their facilities. Um, we have to do something with this, but identify, so do I? If, if the homeowner, the prop, the owner of the dog is uncooperative, Rego was even suggesting that we have to seize all five dogs. Why do I do that? Where do, you know? Then there's this quarantine process. Um, inevitably, we were able to kind of narrow it down to three dogs. Uh, so I have three dogs that are currently being at home quarantined. Uh, I have to go back on the eighteenth to go check on them. And then verifying all their records and all those types of things. So this has been kind of a lengthy process. Fortunately, the, the husband of this dog owner was, has been very cooperative and providing information, but it's just been kind of a lengthy process that I probably could have been doing some other things at the time. Um, but again, what do I do with multiple animals if I had to take all of them into custody? Uh, we don't, normally, uh, it's, it's not very routine that we're dealing with any aggressive or stray, aggressive stray animals. Um, but we will respond to those under emergency. We've had some of those calls. We have got a couple of dogs that are running loose throughout our neighborhood. You need to do something with those. Um, I think we're gonna, we're always gonna respond to those, whether we have no code humane or somebody else doing that, we're gonna have to respond to those, um, because it may come down to us having to, to use some sort of force to, to minimize the threat to any children or families walking by. Um, we're talking about animal bites and clearly animals in hot cars, but we're gonna have to respond to those. Times of the essence in some of those cases. Um, but heck, I have a case last year where I reached out to no code humane. I said, hey, this is kind of what I got. I got a dog in a car, the windows are cracked, I can't find the owner. Um, they came out, kind of guided me through, well, the temperature is this outside, which means that it would normally be this hot inside, and, and this man walked me through. And ultimately, no code humane said, we don't believe the dog is in any danger. Well, you don't have to smash a window out to, to take that, take that dog into protective custody. We will have to respond to those, but no code humane has been invaluable in just helping us in some of these cases where I, I just don't know what to do here. I don't have these abilities, so I don't have to train.
Yeah, yeah, for them to know the temperature variance and what it would be around top of their heads, I mean, that's valuable resource, and that's an extra.
I think our code references eighty degrees or something, or maybe it's cold. Well, it's seventy-nine, what do you do?
Right.
You know, or, you know, so this is, this is where we do, or is team right now, we're trusting no code. In our years of experience, we kind of let us know what to do, they'll, they'll respond, communicate with us, you know, to us know what to do. Maybe it's a phone call, be available, hey, it's seventy-nine degrees, dog looks pretty thirsty, um, you know, what do we do? And just having their partnership gives us that a lot more comfortable for us to make decisions. We've called our, our NSO officer, sounds similar to maybe target areas. Uh, we had a call, it says a dog that, you know, just to quote the words of, of individual call, the dog looks naked and, and looks like they're not taking care of it. Well, you know, our NSO officer has a, our, well, they get a lot of things to do. She'll go there and if it looks a little bit on the way, she'll want to take it home and take care of it, you know, but we're, but we're not experts. She'll admit that I, I admit, I have no idea. We relied on no code. They came out, it was then, I think, the, the next morning. And basically let us know that, you know, the dog is healthy. You know, they knocked, they knocked on the door, they went in the backyard and saw it, they had water, shelter, and all the checklists that they, that they have, and then let us know, hey, that all goes okay. So in our tracking system, you know, we had, we had some of our software, we reached out for partners and they gave us a new hack. We've been there, well, next time we're hunting again, we'll have history of that for.
Trusty Gator has his raise, his hand raised.
Go together.
Yeah, so I had a question that I appreciate you guys sharing that. So Sergeant Cherry, I know you gave the example of kind of reaching out to Rego and asking, you know, kind of what to do and what to handle that situation. Is that something that you are waiting for them to come on site? Is that through a phone call? How is that communication happening?
Sometimes it could just be a phone call. Um, if this is what I got going on, I have some questions. In this particular case, it was an email. Um, because the dogs have been contained, I was comfortable with the, the with the day to, to receive, uh, some guidance there. Um, but even in that case, it was, uh, I was kind of on the fence about whether or not that we should just seize these dogs and have them quarantined offsite rather than, um, in a person's home. And making sure that I'm actually following the, the, what's in our town code regarding quarantines. Some of those things, I just, I said, I'll have some of the next, uh, experience.
Thank you.
Um, Sergeant Cherry, you mentioned that, that you spent a lot of time on this call, and when you say a lot of time, is that like hours, days?
Uh, for each day was at least, at least an hour. First day would probably be two or three hours. This title call was a little uncommon, because usually I don't have, um, the dog owner who is uncooperative.
Yeah.
Now, they're at least willing to work with us. Um, and in this case, I just took time because I had, um, it was not only talking to the woman who had her dog bit, but I had to do interviews with witnesses. There were other witnesses that were in the area. Um, two, two to three different witnesses, including, I'll give into the, the actual lamb or where these dogs were contained. So it took a while just to kind of work through some of these, and then I eventually got a phone call from the husband of the woman that was at the house who closed the blinds when I was there. And, um, and just kind of working, working through that and trying to convince him we're not going away. Send their best interest to darkness.
No, and just because I, just because I'm learning what the process is and things like that. If we had had a contract with no code humane, would that have been something that you all would have handled as opposed to our LCSO officers? Interesting.
We had a case yesterday, and we got the email today. I think it's the, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the state requires if there's any kind of dog bite, if it becomes, you have to have a document saying when, where, who got bit, and then there may have to be some LCSO involvement, some kind of record keeping, but in short, yesterday, a eleven-year-old got bit, knocked on the door, someone opened up the door, dog runs out of the house, bites a, uh, that one fifteen, yeah, eleven-year-old kid, and now, by our code and everything else, this, uh, dog needs to be quarantined. So, full disclosure, you might have another case, you know, but, but that just happened yesterday. So it's, it's not we've been, is the town, we've been a little bit, or at least the town side, been a little bit fortunate, because there has been a path to where a lot of times we don't, town doesn't necessarily know that. You know, this is the happenstance, where when somebody gets bit, they go to, this individual went to our urgent care in town. That urgent care in town required to get this bite form from that, uh, proper details, but, uh, so it's, it's, a lot of times we don't even know about, we've been talking about, with, with moving forward, not the fun. You know, data like this, bragging out the, the software and everything, you know, it was something we, we could track, you know, looking forward to. With partners, they send us, uh, is it quarterly or monthly that you guys send us the reports?
So previously we sent you quarterly reports, uh, because that was the reporting structure and billing structure for the, the old contract.
So we, as a town, sometimes we find out stuff that was going on, we didn't even necessarily, we were out until we got that one.
So we're designated by the Lumber County Health Department as the receiver of any, uh, bite report. So anytime a dog or a cow or certain species of animals bites a D and D, and that person goes to a medical provider, that medical provider is required to report the bite. So they report it to the health department, and they also send it to us. So in this case, we were sent
Or if your animal gets bitten by a wild dog.
True, that's true.
Been that. Yeah, I know that. You really want to make sure that you have these vaccines administered by that very place.
So if, it, so if we didn't have the contract, no code or another provider of that sort, and somebody got bit, would the town be notified at all?
So if we received it, we, well, actually, what happened yesterday is what would happen, is we, we've received that notification, and we get notifications all over.
No matter where you get them.
We get them, and then we just determine where that bite occurred and what the, the what jurisdiction or what, uh, responsible entity owns that, and we forward that information. So we get bites that happened in Windsor or Greeley, but the person went to a medical provider here, and then we forward it to the appropriate.
Do you guys practice that all day?
That, that's just done as a medical, yeah, that's just, that's normal operations.
Okay.
Along the, along the lines of expertise, uh, you're talking about this particular case that I mean. Um, the suspect on his face alleged that the injuries that were caused to this other dog were not caused by her. Um, so now it's looking at, at puncture wounds from the veterinarian and to determine that this was an actual dog bite and the dog wasn't injured by other means. Well, I have no idea. I have no way of looking at photograph or looking at that injury and identifying it as being caused by another animal. I mean, we're assuming they don't, they don't, they're an animal, I don't think, um, but, um, I have no way of looking at this and saying this was, this, these injuries, injuries were a result of a, of another animal bite.
So that would leave your guys as a case, your, you know, veterinarians under your care?
Yeah, well, so our officers, I just looked this number up the other day. Uh, just animal to human bites, we handle, we get about three of those a day, is the amount. So our officers have a lot of experience looking at, looking at bites and bite wounds, and that's just on people. Uh, and then on animals, we get, we get a fair number of those. They get, they're actually underreported. Uh, for the wounds part, most people that animals, animals fight, stuff happens and they, they move on, but because the mandatory reporting, people we get to see all, we get to see a lot of this. I had to reach out to Wellington Veterinary Clinic to try to get some more information, because they're the ones that treated the animal. Um, but even then, they were, um, unwilling to provide me any information directly. Um, and they had to get consent from the dog owner to provide those records to me, but it's still like some sort of professional opinion. Um, as we're presenting this, this case, because this position is charmed, so we need to say, yes, I have the expertise to say that this was caused by. They don't.
They don't.
I know, there's a lot of veterinarians that would tell you about their, find, that we have a confidential, confidentiality of privilege with their clients for their pets, but there is no HIPAA or privacy considerations for animals with protection. It's just one of the same thing. Yeah, that's actually fairly common. Uh, the most challenging is when it's something where there's a group issue, and a veterinary knows about it, but they don't really want to report it. Um, that, that doesn't happen often, but it's more than you would think.
All right.
Now, quick question. You guys work with the local vets, veterinarian here, pretty much as far as different events, if you gotta take them to some, uh, animals in some place or whatever else, or do you just use your own? Can I see what?
And no, I'm
I mean, did you read out the Wellington's veterinarians? Will you could use them instead of transporting them back to facilities or not, or you just?
So, no, i- if, 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 if we pick up an injured animal, we bring it back to the shelter to our vet. Uh, if it's after hours, the officer will take it to see a, whoever um, potentially put all the C D S on the place.
How is the officer transport after hours? Are you talking about your?
Okay, so, I don't know, I, it makes sense.
No, I was, they said officer, and I immediately
Yeah, yeah.
But you got a contract with CSU?
For, um, after-hours service, so we have
Do, I mean, is there any way of doing something like that with the local?
Um, yeah.
There's only a few of them, honestly.
Yeah.
Like maybe three or four.
Yeah.
And for Collins, so there, there's, there, yeah. I'm gonna have an emergency and try and find one of those after hours.
Right. So we have veterinary, we have veterinarians that are on duty that work at our facility. We have a, we actually have a very nice veterinary clinic within our facility. And then when those veterinarians are unavailable, then we have C S U. And which is, we have one of the finest veterinary hospitals in the nation that we have at our disposal as well. When we pick up an animal, the other thing to understand is that when an animal is injured, say we get an animal that's like, and we, we pick that animal up and we take it in, there are some limitations, because that's not our animal. There are some limitations on how much treatment can actually be given to that animal. So we can give enough treatment to make that animal comfortable and to ease suffering, but we can't set bones or perform like major surgery or anything like that, because that's there, there's just limitations in that because of it being property that's not ours, and we're just holding that. So we have, we have to make some calls.
Good. All right, moving on to no code humane. Um, so, right now, what we have with our, with our kind of gap contact that I, that I'm calling, um, the town the, oh, no code humane is helping us upon request. Um, which is kind of the all-in-all menu that we had in the past. It's a little more expensive now, but this is just a temporary agreement and not an option moving forward after March thirty-first. So right now, no code humane provides these options that are here on this list. Um, everything from sheltering and transportation. Wild animals, which is always one of my favorites. I think of a rabid raccoon, who am I gonna call? I'm gonna call no code humane to help me out with that. Um, twenty-four seven emergency response, which I think is a big deal. I did a little bit of research prior to the work session and talked to the former city manager in Loveland who had been through a lot of these same discussions with their council back in October of twenty twenty-three. And was able to glean some information. They, they had done a comprehensive review of what it would cost for them to eat, take it in-house and, and provide and have no code humane be like that support piece. Um, they, they looked at a variety of options, and one of the things that I found really interesting from their, what they found was they reached out to all of the veterinarian clinics, and nobody wanted to take on the additional responsibility when it came down to it. It all sounded good at the time, but then once they realized everything that it was going to entail, they felt that no code humane would be the best option for the services. They did, I think, I believe they, they agreed to the they, they did a one-year agreement, if I remember right.
Our contracts with Loveland are always one year.
Yes, I did. So, yeah, and that's typical. Um, so, but it was interesting. So if you ever get bored and want to look on get bored and want to look on City Loveland's website, it's like in October sixteen, twenty twenty three, somewhere in there. Um, they had, they did a full, full review and they, they assessed all the costs and figured out what it would cost to bring that in-house and have all that information available in a packet, which I found really interesting.
Not only that, but then you have to look at, they, they literally have to enter a contract and provide the services. The catch and caveat is, is there is a totally different standard for taking in rescue animals compared to just operating a veterinarian hospital. So there's so much more that goes into those certifications. The government checks because you will be checked, so there, there's just, there is a lot of action that goes into it. There's contract agreements that our town attorney has to draft and negotiate and there, there's a, there, there's a lot.
Yeah, so, so, um. Some veterinary, some veterinary clinics also do board, so many veterinary clinics will do medical boarding as part of their, they've got a patient who needs to be kept overnight um in care. That's called medical boarding. That, for that, they do not need a license by the Department of Ag, but for regular boarding, um, they need to have what's called a PAC or Pet Animal Care Facilities Act license. As a boarding facility, we are licensed at the shelter, but very same rules apply to both facilities. Um, so if, if a veterinary clinic does not already have that pack of licenses of boarding facility, one, they'd have to have a room to do the boarding, but they'd also have to get that license. I do know when Loveland was looking at this and it was actually in twenty two.
Was it twenty two?
Yeah, um, it's okay. Um, they also contacted them, their boarding facilities within city limits of Loveland and the boarding facilities. Um, because of
Did he end it?
Well, and much, some of the challenges that you, you're bringing in animals with unknown medical vaccination and behavior history. In a boarding facility, when you've got owned animals coming in, those animals, the owners are providing vaccination status. Um, they're providing a lot of information about the medical and behavioral status of those animals. So, yeah.
Different worlds.
Different worlds, yeah.
I think one of the notes I took down was uh the process of taking in unknown animals creates risks would require a separate area with enhanced plumbing and ventilation systems. Because just as you mentioned, I mean, you just don't know what you're bringing in and
Well, and you get parvo into an environment like that.
What do you do with a raccoon? You know?
You're not a raccoon, what are we gonna do?
And you have behavioral issues too. Not every animal comes in, responds well to being away from its own, so it's home. And that, those are added risks to any people that have to handle those animals. Uh, you know, our facility has been designed so that when we have animals that are uh exhibiting any kind of aggression that would be questionable, we can actually clean and feed and do a lot of things with minimal handling, so minimal exposure and stress to the animal and minimal risk to the staff. Whereas traditional kennels usually aren't set up with that sort of uh structure so that you can move an animal without touching it um and, and keep things safe. And your average, uh our staff will also see that, I mean, our staff see thousands of animals and handle thousands of animals year, yearly. Your average vet clinic isn't seeing that volume of animals. So there's also, and it goes to like the bites that we're seeing, when it's exposure to these situations and these experiences that they'll experience and, and the, you know, ability to respond to and handle handle situations properly.
Well, they can't have selective boarding.
Right, well, I mean, we made to the point there, it's, it's kind of like the reason why we have LCSO, right? Because we don't have the funding or the money to do our own police department and even if we did, how much would we be able to give them and will we get qualified candidates that would be able to perform, to create less liability to the town? So these, you know, at NOCO Humane, they, they handle a lot of that, they have that expertise, so they're giving us that quality of service. So I think there's a lot of benefits to be had there. Um, and I just wanted to touch on that, that's that makes sense to me.
So this is talking about what we, what we've already known, um, that NOCO Humane has provided these services to the town for many years under the backup service agreement. Um, as we've talked about through the budget process and, and through the last couple of presentations, um, NOCO Humane has offered to provide the full service agreement to provide all the services which would allow our residents to be able to call them directly, not having to go through the town of Wellington and provide those, that twenty four seven service that our residents appear to be looking for. Um, the NOCO Humane would be enforcing our town code, um, which is currently adopted and we can talk about areas that might need amendments moving forward. Um, we, one of the things that Bertha does, which I think is kind of cool that um should be brought up, I think uh, the last time we got to dinner, I think we had an internal meeting was, it's got fetch parks, right? Is that what it's called?
Yeah.
Sometimes, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there are certain parks within, so there's dog parks in Bertha that are specifically a dog park. It's a fenced area where you can run your dog off leash. And Fort Collins and Loveland, most, most cities these days have some version of that. Uh, what most cities don't have are parks that are not dog parks where your dog can be off leash. Bertha has that to a limited degree. There, and, and so to recognize that dogs and this, and let me back up a little bit. One of the most common things that we hear when somebody is at a dog park in, not a dog park, at a regular park in Fort Collins or Loveland and they're running their dog off leash, which is illegal to move in any place except a dog park in Loveland or Fort Collins. The most common thing we hear, or very common thing is, my dog needs to get exercise. And I don't like going to the dog park because there's competition, it's dirty, whatever. They have all sorts of reasons for that. Well, Bertha has certain parks they've designated as an area where a person can go and play what they call fetch games with their dog. So as long as the dog is engaged in games of fetch, catching a frisbee, chasing a ball and is engaged in that, it's not considered loose. That makes sense, which makes sense because a dog that's engaged in that one, it's not doing anything else, right? It's not running off, it's not running up to people, it's not getting into, into fights with other dogs. And, and it's doing something productive for that dog, something healthy for that dog and something good for the owner as well. Um, it's been remarkable to watch that in Bertha. How long has that been? You know, honestly, I don't know until we started. So Bertha, for a long time, had the same sort of contract that, that Wellington did. So we didn't conduct any enforcement down there. They would call up, they'd call for an adjustment. Somebody just in the dog park that wasn't from the regular park, he'd be called to. So it wasn't until we took over services, full services for them a couple of years ago and we really were examining the rules and having to figure out the geography and all the parks and the regulations for each place, that we found out that they have this, this fetch. Uh, and we've never heard of it and we also have not seen any problems, so long as we, the last two years. Uh, it's been, we see people playing fetch all the time, they, you know, they wave at us, we wave back and and drive on or sometimes have a conversation with, you know, uh, but it seems to have been very productive. And there's a lot of communities that have tried different things, like good canine, you know, good canine citizen and all these different things to certify their dogs to be off leash. Um, by and large, the feedback from a lot of people is it sounds good on paper, but they're either really hard to administer. Um, your dog's passing a good canine citizen thing doesn't, you know, giving off certification, but then when it's running down the park chasing ducks, uh, doesn't really fit, right? So, so those things haven't really played out. They're all great ideas to try and meet that need, but they haven't really worked. This is one thing that we've found in a small town in Laramie County that we haven't seen anything negative coming out of it. Because the basic rule is, which we hear from people, my dog wasn't doing anything. You know, somebody's playing frisbee at City Park in Fort Collins. We have to tell them they gotta put their dog on a leash because it's not allowed. They go, well, it wasn't doing anything. You say, we know. But the law doesn't allow you to do that and we can't just leave it. In these cases, we can't, you know, in Bertha, if we see somebody playing fetch with their dog and there's no problem and they're in a park that allows it, so that also allows some of the community to have places to go where they won't encounter dogs running, running loose. Then it works. And when it doesn't work, it's the same as anybody whose dog is just running loose in the park. So it's, it's been a really, I think it's been in, in everything that I've seen over the years, it's been probably one of the most ingenious solutions to that issue. And, and it's, it just seems to work and it's very low key.
You see dogs, I mean, fetch in the park, it's usually those ones are still obsessed with the ball that they wouldn't
It's not quite
There's no way that that dog or maybe one.
I must try to teach your dog to fetch in Severn and so it just won't learn, but those kind of, I know those are
Yeah, and then the other thing is, one of the cheapest amenities to add to a community is a dog park. And it usually is a drainage area, does not, not used for anything else, is zoned appropriately for, you know, recreational use and so when we're talking about the things, that's, if I'm thinking about the service, I'm thinking about you know, the feedback that I receive and then, well, my dog's good, right? But you can't look, my dogs are certified. I just think it's a great tree. But when you see a dog on the street, if you don't see them with their like graduation cap on, how do you know that that's a canine certified, good citizen dog? You don't know that. And then same thing if a dog running in a park, there's good dog, I don't
Well, even a good dog, when they're scared
Yeah.
can lash out.
Yeah.
Nature.
So those, I think those items that the community has most complained about, um, although they're in this, right, they're in the subject related to this contract enforcement's related are ordinance issue or amenity issue. So between those two things, um, the other major feedback that I heard from our session that I did and also from what I just saw from the therapist, well, overall, everybody says they're not, they're not necessarily um, okay with the services that we have provided and the majority of them said they want to see them increased. But the summary that could be surveyed, they'll just thought, that was kind of a low level in those results, but um, the other thing is, well, this other provider offers this service, this other provider offers this service. And so there were a lot of ideas that were thrown out of, why would we only use one when there's other people that could do similar services? Well, when we're talking about contracting with five different agencies for five different types of services and then still having to have some overcompensating NOCO domain cover it, right? For whether it's twenty four hours, whatever cases, what is the cost associated with that? And then when I find a dog or when I have, there's road ferrets or whatever it is, who do I call? I don't know. Do I call this number, that number? Do I go to the website and go through a, a, a phone tree menu option that determine who I'm supposed to call for what serals? Like, I'm a little worried about that. So as much as I understand and appreciate the community wants us to seek out options. Um, I, I think that one consolidated service, one, you know, one point of contact is going to be the most streamlined option and the cheapest option, I'm pretty sure, but but either way, we can, we can look at a lot of those options, but I think we have a whole lesson here to research and see what other options are.
Yeah, and I mean, to that, I think, trust me, we talked about long, you know, what does that look like? If we were to, you know, more or less piecemeal something together with all these private entities? How do we know that this person isn't gonna wanna move out of state or to another municipality and, and so how, that, that just turns things into a mess real quick if that means this.
Or do plans change?
Yeah.
Or they're no longer certified or something came up?
Right.
Or, you know, you guys sounded like NOCO has more than one option available, so say you guys some catheter you have to shut down Laramie County for some emergency procedure. It sounds like you guys have more than one facility where you can transport it.
We do, so we do now have two facilities, but we have our Laramie campus and our well campus, but, um. Well, is extremely small and we are struggling, which communities, I know in County when they ran it through, um, so it's not anything new, um, to even service the well community. But, um, we've done some things and are doing some things that are expanding our capacity there, but it's essentially a third size of a Laramie campus.
Okay.
Um.
So what would happen if your facility closed? What would happen as far as just like if an emergency were to come up, where would animals go if?
Um, so like if a natural disaster occurred or something like that, um. Well, fire up wouldn't close our facility.
Right.
Um, when we had to respond, so maybe better way, I think to your question, is when we've had to respond to natural disasters like the Cameron Peak and East Troublesome Fires, or even going back from when we were in the old facility and had the um High Park Fires, um, we we were still able to take in what we had to from our communities. We worked with other local boarding facilities, CSU, um, some other, as well as some particularly with High Park, with some of our other partners on the front range to help take animals um, either were available for an option and were going to be in cases, some of the boarding facilities, some of the evacuated animals went to those other boarding facilities.
Right, so you never had any issue where you had to say, I can't take your animals?
Yeah, the closest that we've ever come to that was during COVID, when, you know, COVID, not just the, you know, the moments, but a lot of people changed their minds about where they wanted to live or what jobs they wanted. So there was a big, uh, there was a big exodus in people, I think, across the board everywhere. Moving to, moving back home or moving wherever, and so we were, so we were challenged with our staffing during that time. And, uh, to the point where we had to make some adjustments like with our, not with our service hours, but with the hours of the facilities opening and however, that had zero, uh, even, even with health control, we were down honestly, we came down to almost, we were, we were, uh, one person away from having to call every doctor at any and say, we're gonna have to modify some things. Uh, because we were down to roughly fifty percent of our staff, uh, which is a challenge on a seven day week, five jurisdiction contract. Um, so, but we never did.
Right.
Um, and it never impacted our ability to take in animals during that time.
Perfect. Now, if something were like that were to happen, would you guys? I guess that's something that us as a board would need to figure out then, if you guys hit a point where you're like, okay, we have to say that we are adjusting these hours and we're not gonna be able to service you. Is there credit issued for the inability or how does that all?
I don't know that we've, yeah, that's a great question. I don't know that we've ever in the history of the organization had to
Okay.
cut services. That's why I say when COVID happened, we hit a spot, yeah. And then we have to have a conversation about it. It's kind of a, it's kind of a dubious case, but you have
What I, what I could imagine is us saying to you, um, we're only going to be able to provide five hours of service a day.
Okay.
Or, um, you're, you're, right now you're on a, if you went to the full service contract, um, from contract with Timmy from Bertha, that's a five day a week. Um, an officer out in the field, seven day a week responding to, um, phone calls through dispatch and stuff like that. Um, we might come to you and say, you know, temporarily, we're gonna need to cut that to four days. I would, we have talked about it, I would imagine it being really likely that we just cut them around.
Right.
So that we were trying to address the key calls, the top priority call, continuing to address the top priority calls um, in a timely manner.
Perfect, and this is just what it
And, yeah, 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 yeah.
I don't know if you've attended the meeting, Si, I'm definitely the what a kind of person, but I'd just like to know what we face.
Yeah, and then from a sheltering side, you know, it would be more, we're pretty much, we're a little bit in the tornado. Um, because we're not in flood Because we're not in flood plain. We're not. A fire would be quite unusual. Um, and we, we have home towns and safety. With with.
Got it. For emergency backup locations, just in case some. Sorry, I didn't mean to go that, knock that, but I.
Yeah, I'm, I've just got one real quick one. And certainly I love the idea of that part. Obviously discuss that as far as, uh, our ordinances go. Uh, just one question for you guys, as far as. Uh, animals that are stray or loose or anything like that, if you happen to pick them up and they are micro tripped or shipped, would you? Put in the effort to attempt to find that owner before?
Yeah, so, so there is, so, so, and I, I attempted to answer that the, at another meeting and I didn't do a very good job of it. And there was some, uh, there was some opinions about my answer. So our best practice and what we attempt to do is to trace that animal and return it before it goes back to the shelter. That's our goal. However, the realities of this line of work, just like in regular law enforcement, is that circumstances don't always permit them. They may be, uh, other calls that are occurring that don't permit them to stop and. Track down an owner and take the animal back to their home or meet that person. Uh, they might have to respond to other calls in another area. Uh, there may be an issue with the trace. There's a variety of things. So our, our goal is to get that animal back home. Best efforts are to get the animal back home, time and circumstance permitting. Uh, because honestly, we don't want to take that animal all the way back to the shelter and put it in our facility. If it can go back home. That's where we want it to go. That's better for the animal, it's better for the people, um, it's more efficient. You know, so, so, but I've, I've known of officers picking up a dog here in Wellington. Driving around with it and then driving back to Wellington to give it back to someone. When they could have, and keep in mind where Wellington is in relation to the rest, you know, the rest of. Fort Collins and Loveland and an officer going to Wellington and then driving all the way down to South Loveland. To do another call and then they hear from the owner. Well, they have to drive past our shelter. Efficiency would say like, it's, you know, there's a lot of effort going into driving that animal all the way back to Wellington when. You didn't answer your phone, you know, we've tried to contact you, it could very reasonably just impound the animal at that point when they're five minutes away. Rather than drive twenty minutes each way to return that animal. And our officers do that, that don't add on a regular basis. So, you know, again, it's time, time and circumstance permitting, that's our goal. We want the animal, we prefer the animal to be home, but in our facility. So if that's the long answer to your question.
Sure. No, I, yeah, I appreciate that.
I've witnessed them doing that as well. Um, we, we called them out a couple of years ago for a dog that was running around Cleveland Avenue. Um, and we've came out to help us capture this dog, we did. Um, and they spent some time, he spent some time there on the scene before he went anywhere else. Checking on his computer, I don't know what other databases he looked, he was able to identify who that, who the owner was. And said, I know, I figured it out and I'm going to take him home.
Awesome. Awesome. Yeah, I, I really appreciate that answer. I think the only other thing I would say for this, you know. Uh, I, I know certainly Mr. Zadina has shared some concerns with us as far as it goes. I, I have not seen anything from him officially as far as, uh, what services he will be able to provide or at what cost and what hours and with the. Number of different scenarios that we've seen presented to us. Uh, I, I don't know that I could say in good faith at this time, I. Would feel really good about contracting out with one of our oldest vets to be able to provide these, I think they've got. Got the whole package for us and, you know, if, again, if Mr. Zadina would come forward and say. Hey, here's the certain things I can provide very with, with. Specifics.
Signable contract.
Then that would, that would be one thing, but I've not seen anything as far as this package.
I mean, this, you know, you're good to establish it. You, it just speaks to your culture that you have, that you picked up an animal, tried to return it, couldn't, took it back down south of Fort Collins and then brought it all the way back up. I mean, that's, you, that shows so much more than just, we have people that are giving a big. And if you have a culture like that where you're breeding. That type of, of drive and somebody who cares that much about the animal and the person that owns that animal, which is something like that. Incredible. And then for the sheriff here, you know, just could witness that himself. Um, and they also have great culture, um, that is just fun to me personally.
Some of our officers besides, so they have a microchip scanner in every truck, so they scan for microchips. They also have the ability, um, if an animal's wearing a rabies tag, obviously they've got an ID tag, it's easy to call. But if they're wearing a rabies tag, they have the ability to trace that rabies tag. As well. So that's an additional way. Sometimes if it's really close in an area. And dispatch has the time to kind of do a search to say, is there a? Do we have a German Shepherd licensed on this block of the street because it's a German Shepherd? They can also do that. That is time, that, that piece is very much undependent, but that's a little bit. Scanning a microchip and tracing the number or tracing rabies tag. But.
I'll take three minutes, um, but I don't have any, any additional questions. Um, being a person that has ran from a dog that was attacking her with my daughter. I literally threw my daughter in my door because I was running down my street and I saw the dog coming after us. I know the services needed. I did want to also hear from the public and know or see what other additional options might be viable or available. Um, I did do some looking into other municipalities about what they had offered and the. And sat and looked at how many contracts we would have to have independently, if I'm invested in Dan, looking at contracts when we're going through ordinance rewrites. Um, having one person to contact and reach out to, um. This is a year's contract, to my understanding. If this contract does not work, we get a lot of complaints. If people don't like the way the system is going, we can explore additional options. This, well, the old contract Patty and I have been looking at since last April. So, and she started digging into things, trying to get some answers. And I want to say it was the end of May, she found out that this contract was transitioning over. Um, because I had messaged about a loose dog and was trying to find out information about said loose animal. Um, I would love the fact if we could keep funds local, um, some of my questions just more revolved around our ordinance. Side of things and what we wanted to address that way, as well as if there is like possibly any way that while you can get some of the licensing fees kicked back. If we can't, I understand, I know we won't be handling any of those licensing. We don't pay the admin who handle the licensing, we won't be verifying licensing, that'll all be through you guys. It would still be great to see a benefit go back towards that, maybe a one percent of it and invest it in the parks that we're talking about. As far as the fetch parks. It's not in this contract, but maybe possibly next year, having a percentage available to us to reinvest in our dog park or. You know, I, I think people here love their animals. But other than that, I don't mind moving forward with the things the way they are. Um, I would just like to look at our ordinances and make sure that they're where it's well lined up because I think that's what the feedback was. Um, as much as I would love to do a lot of the stuff that was offered on this sheet. A lot of it is focused on neighbors helping neighbors, but we're a municipality where we can't guarantee the neighbor is going to help a neighbor. As much as I would love to say that, and a lot of our neighbors do, we can't guarantee it. And that's what worries me in all of this is if you can't guarantee it, then we're not the whole health and safety.
There's help in anybody.
Right. And the health and safety aspect is what I focused on and it's also a good storefront. So that we would, it's, that's actually part of the job, you know, so I would say that I'm, I don't have. Any apprehensions about this. Some of the, like I said, some of the financial aspects. The call average I'm worried about because that's about a half of what. We kind of saw, because any calls that would go to LCSO, now we're all going to go to you guys. So that. I guess something we'll deal with next year.
Knowledge and contractor is termination for cons. We weren't unable to fill the contract. So that's obviously in there, so I wanted to acknowledge that too. I also just wanted to point out that they impact on service, it's sort of a trade.
Do I have any further ending further from the board?
No, I just drawn, have a hand up or is he?
I had some thoughts, yeah, if there's a chance to talk. Um, so I appreciate all the information that's been shared. Um, I think it was enlightening to read through the surveys that were provided. I think about sixty seven percent of them all said that they wanted an increase in services that were provided. And I think the single biggest complaint that I saw on there was just the timeliness of responses, regardless of who it was, whether it was. Town staff, whether it was Noco humane, whether it was LCSO, they were just like, hey, it feels like I'm bringing up concerns and nothing happens. Um, so that was really good to get that feedback. I think that was one of the biggest things that for me was we received feedback right before this was coming to us from a decision. The feedback we recert, received to me was very concerning. Um, I would say the two areas that still. Are kind of the biggest concern for me is number one. Again, we're talking about a massive increase in what we're paying from what we have paid in the past and just. Do we have the data supporting that we actually need all of that? I know one of the things, we had a list of a lot of different services. I would love to actually know like how much of these different things are we doing? I know Sergeant Cherry gave a couple of examples. I know Planning Department, thank you guys for giving some examples of what we've seen. Um, it would be nice to actually see some hard numbers of what are we actually doing? Uh, so that's number one. Number two, I do still have some concerns around what the enforcement's going to look like. Now, I think a lot of that comes down to what are actual. Laws. And I think that that's something that has been acknowledged by the board is maybe we need to look at. I love the idea of. Certain parks are designated that you can play games with your dog. That's a great option. There have been some other options floated, so I think we need to look at that. Um, if we are going to have Noco humane. Um, coming out and enforcing our laws, there needs to be, I know we have conversations all the time with Sergeant Cherry and LCSO and kind of. With our town staff is how we want those interactions with our public to be. And I think that the general. Instance that I have seen and heard from everything is, you know, yeah, if there, if there's a crime, it's a crime, we, we're not, we're not soft on crime here. But at the same time, we're also not the town where, you know, the cops are sitting there just ready to write a ticket to you because you want, you know, half a mile an hour over the speed limit. Um, and if we're going to have another entity that is coming in and enforcing our laws. We need to make sure they are doing that consistent with the expectations that we have with everyone else, whether that's code enforcement, whether that's LCSO. Or whether it's no co humane, it needs to be consistent with what we're expecting from everyone else that's enforcing laws.
I want to address just a couple of things. So. Prior to your current neighborhood services officer, you had somebody doing code enforcement who was also doing animal control for you. So what you need to recognize is while this contract may pay us more than you were paying us in the past. You were paying for a code, for somebody on staff who was doing this role. So I don't know exactly what you were paying them, nor how much of their time was animal control. But I would argue that you, that plus what you were paying us was probably more than this will service contract.
Not only that, but the average pay for LCSO.
Yeah, so, and again, this is why I'd love to see the numbers because, I mean, I don't know how much less we're paying, we literally have the exact same position. So I don't know how much less we're paying the individual in that now. But we were never, this is, tonight was the first time I've been told that, oh yeah, we, staff has wanted to no longer handle this. Um, and that explains some of this, but you are correct, this has been handled internally by our code enforcement up to this point. But we still have that position. And again, maybe, maybe we did, maybe we cut that position's pay by twenty thousand dollars a year. I don't know, my. I don't see those numbers, so if Patty wants to send those to us, that'd be great. But I know that we didn't have a position that we no longer have. We still have that same position that we had. Again, the only difference is we have a different individual there, so I don't know what their pay rate is versus the pay rate of the individual who was there before.
And I, I don't know that. The other thing that I will say is. Our approach to enforcement of ordinances is to start with. Education and trying to encourage people to voluntarily follow the ordinances. Um, we are happy to have that conversation with you. But if there's an ordinance on the, on your books. We need to be able to enforce it and we need to enforce it regardless of who the person is. If you don't want it enforced, take it off the books. Because what happens is if there's something on the books.
You have to enforce it.
And you don't enforce it, people get very confused and very frustrated. We had that experience before. Um, and it's just not fair to our officers.
It's not fair to the community. There's the expectation, the expectation is that the laws are going to be. That upheld and, and when, when there's kind of a piecemeal, you know, this, this is what our law is, but we want to, you know. But let's kind of take a soft, soft step into, you know, onto that one. It can be confusing for people because they don't know where the boundaries are. So, um, yeah, if there's a challenge with the, the laws and how you want them enforced. The best, uh, the best thing or solution there is to change the law that you have to address that expectation rather than. Have a soft.
No, I, I totally agree that that's something we need to address is what are the ordinances that we have on the books? Uh, absolutely agree with you on that, that that's, if we're going to have a law, I, I've been this for a long time, if we're going to have a law, we do need to enforce it. But again, there's a difference between the attitude of how it's enforced, you know, how are we interact, that to me is more important. You know, if someone's breaking the law and Sergeant Cherry's deputy is sitting down with them, I know that they're going to have a conversation, but I also know that they're not going to be rude, they're not going to be belligerent with them. They're going to do the best they can to educate them and be respectful to them, but when their needs, and, and they have that knowledge of, okay, this is a point where. This can't just be education, this is, you know what, we're, we're, we're taking a ride. And I appreciate that. And it's just, if we're going to have another entity, we've built that trust with LCSO. And again, obviously with our staff, they work for, they work for the town administrator, so if there's issues with town staff, we can handle that internally. But in this case, we're bringing out an outside organization. We don't have that control over what your staff does or doesn't do. We haven't really developed that relationship yet. And so I want to make sure that if we're going to go down this road, that we're able to do that and work that to the point where we can build that trust, not just. Within our organization and Noco humane, but with our residents as well. I don't want it to be something where our residents are sitting here just like, oh, these are the horrible worst people. I like it to be something where it's like, hey, this is needed, which that was very. Clear from the survey that people responded. Response after response after response was there's so many animals running here, I don't feel safe in town, this is super frustrating, they won't take care of it. So that's where we're at now is not good. And so I understand we need to figure out something that's a solution. But if we're going to go down this route, I want to make sure that we're not creating a worse problem trying to solve a different problem.
Yeah, I can respond to that. Um, so. We provide these services for numerous municipalities within Laramore County. And in all of those areas, there is opportunity for people to not like their interaction with one of our officers. We're in, we, in animal control, part of our role is enforcement. So bluntly, not everybody likes what we do and not everybody likes, uh. The interaction they have regardless of how the officer may have acted or not. If they, whether they were, they may have been nice and they didn't like it, they might, maybe they didn't like their attitude when they spoke with them. But in every case, if there's a complaint from the community regarding our officers, that's something that. We have a system to address that. There are supervisors for each of the officers, they don't just work independently and are free to just do whatever they want. We have a standard in our behavior and how they're trained. And if somebody has a complaint, they can reach out to us and make that known to a supervisor. And that works through a system of addressing that complaint, looking into what happened. Um, and then addressing that, that person's concern. If there's a concern from the. Um, and then addressing that, that person's concern. If there's a concern from the jurisdiction or municipality that we contract with. And with our, we have a liaison with every community that we work in. And if there's something coming to Loveland, it goes through Loveland Police with the city of Fort Collins, through Neighborhood Resources, so. So on and so forth. If they receive complaints, they reach out to us about what happened and we have a discussion about that interaction. Something else to understand is that we do have body cameras. Officers all carry body cameras. And barring an error or malfunction, they trigger that body camera when they're having an interaction with somebody, particularly in an enforcement manner. So there's also a record of how they're speaking to that person and how they're addressing that. I will tell you, I get complaints about my officers attitudes. It's not an uncommon complaint. But I also know that I have video recordings where I can watch it and where I listen to this and say, please, and thank you, and please don't do that, you know? And they're the ones being cordial. Uh, so I haven't had any evidence to date of my officers acting inappropriately. But if it were to happen, we would address that very quickly.
Well, I'm not mistaken, mistaken municipalities that have contracted, which you have sent you letters of appreciation and thank you after this contract has gone through. We've seen it working. We're like, wow, you guys are going above and beyond. Um, so I think that's very comparable as well.
We instituted body cameras about, about two, uh, they could actually it's going on three years ago. We're not required to carry body cameras. There was, you know, the. Law enforcement is, there's, there's a law now that law enforcement has to wear a body camera. We don't. Animal control doesn't have to wear a body camera. We're not part of the police department or sheriff's office. But we voluntarily decided that that was something we thought was good practice and was good for the community and for our officers. So we went through the expense and the effort to, to institute that program with our. Great question. Absolutely. So that is part of, so when we have a case where there's been a charge issue. Uh, that, that body cam footage is part of the evidence that can be submitted in court.
And d- does that go into L C S O's record?
No, we have our own. You know, we use the same system, which is Axon, but it's the, but we have our own, uh, recorded contact.
Is that data and the information request to hold by L C S O if they ask for it?
So it is pertaining to the case, a, a active case.
Got it. Okay. So they would have access to that information? Got it. So like in court. From the humane.
No, not necessarily. There's no request. So if the sheriff's office said, hey, we were on this call and when we get your footage, that actually happens, that actually happens all the time. Yeah, we just, we just had this case. You guys were there. Could we get a copy of your footage? Actually, the, the prosecutors in the district court. They regularly request body cam footage from cases that weren't even ours, but our officer was there with the sheriff's deputy or police. Yeah, they're like, oh, you were unseen. We'd like to get your footage as well. So that's a fairly common, but then we also have cases where we're, nobody else is there. It's just us. And we'll submit that to the prosecutor department, which is pretty easily shindigged.
Real quick comment, you know, public service, public safety is our major concern here, number one concern. Not only what you guys are doing is a public service, um, for public safety. But you're freeing up our sheriffs at that point. You know, we're so concerned about having an extra. Party out at the high school and different places. By having these people here, you're freeing up more time for these guys to do what they really need to be doing. And that has to be a major concern of ours, right?
Well, and the cost of the humane society contract instead of the cost of the.
Absolutely.
Well, I'm also thinking about consistency. Consistency in that I know. That they've demonstrated that they, if we need them to respond, that they will respond within a certain period of time. I can't, I can't guarantee that on with some other entity. Um, if I'm waiting on, on scene because I've arrested, uh, someone, I've taken them into custody. Uh, sorry. Um, and they happen to have an animal in the vehicle. I can't wait there for hours and hours and hours for some other person to respond. I know that I can make a phone call and they're going to be.
So if you're like a bad kind of savings on what they're costing us by cars paying for it, you got.
Totally valuable for what you guys provide.
And I think there's also, there's a value, there's kind of a hidden value in the experience for the call. You know, there's, there's a number that you're seeing that seems higher. Part of that is there's, there's the ease for the community to call. And not have to worry about, do they call town hall today or who do they call? It's a Saturday. And then how does that get referred or calling us and then getting bounced back? There's also just from a staffing perspective, the, so the original contract that we had was wrong. It was a backup contract. It was there. When your code enforcement and animal control person was either on vacation, out sick, or you were looking to hire a new one. That was the goal of that previous contract was to support that or if that person needed backup and they needed another person to show up. So with, uh, with us, we have an entire organization, an entire animal control department. Where we recruit and we make sure that that staff, and if our, if the person that works up in, you know, that is assigned to work in, uh, birth attendant in Wellington. Calls out sick that day. Um. We make sure that another person fills that slot. And when that person decides that they're going to move on to someplace else, then, uh, we do all the recruitment. We, we still, that, that, that position still gets filled every day. And then we're doing all of the recruitment and the hiring and the training and the equipping. So there's some, there's some savings and some costs there that don't seem really, remotely apparent, but that are substantial.
Everyone, all the, all the cost savings that we don't inherently see when they have to call town staff, what is that pulling them away from that they should be working on? Did they call you? Did they give you the dispatch with your current contract or the L C S O that they called them and for them to call you? I mean, all of that adds up. Um, yeah, super huge.
Yeah, I just wanted to say real quick, uh, maybe the trustee Gators, uh, comments. I just, I just want to let people know that. You know, I've got a pretty small, the business or the building side of my role, we have, we have partners who say. It's a similar, similar thing. We, we trust another partner to go out there and, and do our inspections and our planning. That said, I can tell you that daily I get calls and questions and everything else from our residents, um, with the building. And I get at least one call every day with questions about the neighborhood services office. So I guess in short, I just, I just wanted to let people know that we're still going to have, as a staff, our team or NSO team. Is going to have a pulse on, on what we're going to get calls, you know, if, if there's anything with. No co humane, if someone's not going to like that phone, it's a, a problem. And I'm going to listen and we're going to partner with, uh. Uh, Judy and Regal and we're going to communicate. So if there, if we do start seeing some. Positive or negative feedback, we're going to get a pulse on it. We're going to work with our partners. Anger goes back to the enforcement staff, yes, we have. We have a code that says, uh, that you not only have to have a dog on six foot leash, you have to have some kind of music thing up at it. I can tell you NSO isn't asking people that we can make it or the dark, but, but, but. Right, like, you know, it, it is, but what I'm getting at is, is this is the kind of partnership. Back, you guys, feedback as well, horse feedback and third is friends. And then we talked about changing some of the color or doing something like that because what we're naming to enforce the show. I think to trustee Gator's point, I don't feel like we need to maybe ask everybody where, where the bag is, you know, um. But these are the things that is, is a, when we get a new inspector, all the times I get called because it's new individuals out there. Anger a little, right? So I know that we don't have new inspectors by any means, but we do have maybe a new. Full service presence that we haven't had. So I expect to get calls, um. Positive and, and negative. And I do think our numbers might go up in, in services because of the fact that. I'm not picking on anybody in the past or going backwards, but we do have a great system in L S O where we have a great NSO officer who's detailed. They're a little transparent, has a routine. Uh, so I do think that now, because I did see some of the survey questions too. A lot of people didn't know where to go. Pretty quick, like they're going to know exactly where to go. And I think that when we do have that. It's a great service and so we have to do, right? Do you think we will see enough to? Hopefully, hopefully, once we get, you know, some consistent service and transparency and, and some trust, you know, with what we're doing. Hopefully we'll see it start curbing down or people will have control. We may wait until the dog part where they can back to, our numbers will go down. Right now, I, I kind of expect those things to come up, but we communicate with, with our human, Patty knows it now, so. I think we will know quick, like pros and cons of what we're doing and we can.
I think you can anticipate that you'll see a spike, you'll see a spike in calls. Like you said, people know where to call. People who can confuse about calling, didn't feel comfortable to call. Now we'll do that. And so you tend to see it uptick in that. And then also where there's things like animals that are running loose. Some of that gets under, gets handled and gets addressed and then that starts to subside a little bit because they realize that. Yeah, yeah, I shouldn't just let it out the front door. They're running the neighborhood, you know, or maybe.
But I have a trainee. She is my I T partner.
I can tell you that myself and our officers don't want to be asking people where their, uh, dog at. That's, that's not something that, you know. That, that you're, we're going to be making up.
So, so we're good with March twelfth, having the I G A and the resolution for the contract.
The ordinance too before we engage in the contract with them, just so they know. Right after we, but the order could be before they have to start into process, right?
We can be contracted and then the order.
But I thought.
It's going to take a little bit of time.
So you probably will have a few more complaint calls because. Everything will be.
Others understand this. So when we took over on birth and ten, they haven't had any real active enforcement going on for quite a while. Our officers, um, took a very soft approach in the beginning for, for a couple of months. And in fact. All of our approach within the first few weeks, the first month of this year, when we were. We rolled out as if we had the full service contract. Um, that was the instructions that the officers had. So our officers didn't issue any tickets to anybody. All of their contacts were, hey, this is, you know, we're here, here's what Elias, you got to keep that in mind. So they do, we have like a kind of a soft role. It's the people become aware. We don't want to just show up and all of a sudden. It's the smackdown on everybody in the community because if they have that going on for a while, they're not used to that level of enforcement and attention. So we want to get some education out there so that they can then. Think about what's going on and, and reassess maybe what some of their decisions might be or what are, what things might be. And it's definitely a soft, and we can soft roll out just to keep things going. But. You know, if it happens on this week and the same person next week, kind of on a soft roll that way.
It's, it's going to happen. We're dealing with that very thing right now, just with the parking enforcement through town that just really hasn't been enforced. Well, my deputy's got a complaint on me for a car that I left on somebody's windshield because they were parked too close to the stop sign. It's a public safety thing, but it's like stop approach. These little, these little, uh, we had little postcards made up to say, hey, you're. Parked too close to this or you're parked on the wrong side of the road and guy called in and says, I'm unhappy because you guys put this on my car with a warning. Um, because this is the way I've been parking, you know, for the longest time. So we just haven't really addressed it. And so we're trying to do that soft approach, do the education piece. Um, and then if it continues. Um, then we can start doing some additional work. For instance, I just put one on the vehicle on the seventh. I came back, the postcard had been removed and the carousel there. This time I put an impound tag on it. So. Um, so it's going to be gone tomorrow. I'm going to make, and it's there. So, but it's. But it's, it's an education piece that lets people know, hey, we're around, we're doing this additional thing.
And possibly something in our newsletter after.
Oh, yeah, of course.
Oh, absolutely.
We'll do a press release and things. It'll be, it'll, we'll, we'll make it a deal so that people are aware. That's our best way to get the information out.
He's still on, uh, he hasn't raised his hand though.
I'm still here. Yeah. The only other note that I had, um, and this can just be sent to the board, Patty. Um, or Kelly, I don't know who would have the answer. Just when was the decision made to change? As I know, we'd said, oh, we never did animal control, but then I'm being told. That was a backup to our animal control. If you could just let the board know when we made that shift in that position of neighborhood services to no longer handle animal control work, that would be great. Um, and then also just as a note, um, I know I'm normally there in person. Um, it is very challenging to hear the people kind of on the west side of the room. So I don't know if we can try to move the tables in future a little bit closer. So. Patty. Sorry. Yeah, we're, uh, trustee Daley, um, Kelly Dykstra, Dan, your side of the table is really hard to hear on that side. Um, so just, I'm normally there, so I don't notice this, but I'm online. So just to keep in mind, we want to. Make sure we're loud and I don't know if we can maybe scoot the tables slightly in closer, just make it easier for people online to hear. That's it.
I got a comment that it was the opposite side from somebody else.
Yeah, appreciate you guys coming out.
Thank you for allowing us time to get our residents feedback first. I think that is huge and it makes all the.